Need a motion to open the meeting tonight?
I made the motion.
Okay, Member Kelly made the motion and Joe, I'll use that as a second. Member Umberto seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, meeting is open. I want to make another motion that we move to a attorney-client session with our attorney. If someone would make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Member Umberto?
I'll second.
And Member Allen. And I'm going to ask the board to, uh, to remove and, uh, went to the office.
We should vote on the motion.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we need a motion to go back into our public, I mean into our, our meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Member Ainucci, in a second.
I'll second it.
Member Hefnecker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, before we move forward and our first applicant up tonight is the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center, um, but our attorney would like to make a couple of comments.
Okay. Um, before we go into, um, reviewing, our attention tonight is to review the public comments from two weeks ago. Um, I did want to make the applicant aware that two of our members have did do a site visit over the weekend from a viewed from an adjoining property, so I wanted the applicant to be aware, um, of that, um, that visit. Um, we don't believe that the visit resulted in anything in addition to what the public comment that was presented and the board will be relying on the public comment presented at the public hearing. Anything else to?
No, I think that's-
So I think, I think the board at this time is going to go into discussion of some of those comments, um, as part of our secret, our secret review.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, we had the public meeting, um, our last meeting and, uh, it was a great meeting and I think a lot of support from the Islamic Center came out and shared their thoughts about, you know, um, the center being here, which is great, and we had a few people, um, a number, a few of the neighbors, I think it was three, uh, in total, as far as representative, uh, that gave some of their concerns, which were also important. We have the comments that are up on, you know, the screen here and as the board does its due diligence-
I just want to be clear, Terry, did those summaries get forwarded to the applicant? I want to make the applicant has-
Comments?
The comments?
They need to.
So we're going to sit over here now and view them?
We're to speak them, but you, to, to view them, you'd have to sit where you can see the screen.
Please make sure the applicant gets a full comment.
You might have to get close because I don't know how good your eyes are.
Do you want me to look back to the new comment?
Yeah.
The summaries you've emailed to me.
Excuse me?
The summaries you've emailed to me.
Right.
Yes.
Make sure the applicant has the comment.
Yes. This was what she wrote over at the meeting.
No, I wrote summary for one- Yes, yeah, exactly.
Some further questions? This is, let's see, right here?
So, Terry, I'm talking this, this summary, is this the letter we received today? Then that's post-public comment, so we're not going to consider that.
This is post-public comment.
Yeah, the summary you emailed in the last-
From the last meeting.
That she sent today? The length that the meeting sent?
What you typed out?
Or what I typed?
What you typed out.
What you typed out. Okay, give us just a minute. So as part of the due diligence of the planning board, um, after hearing public comment, it's our role to look at those comments and discuss those comments and even get responses if necessary from the applicant, um, you know, whether it's tonight or, or not, but we, we want to do that if, if any of them are requiring a, a response. And what I want to do, because I didn't do it, is the roll call for our board. So while she's looking for that, I'm going to just do a roll call of board members for tonight. Uh, Member Allen?
Present.
Member Wu Shae, present. Member Hefnecker?
Present.
Member Ainucci?
Present.
Member Kelly?
Present.
Member Umberto?
Present.
And Member Carlich notified us that she wouldn't be here tonight, but she will be at the next meeting.
That's the document I was talking about, Terry. The one you just pulled up.
And also, we recognize that, you know, some public, public comments, which are concerns, genuine concerns of the neighbors, um, you know, may or may not be something that Planning Board can do anything about. It's just a matter of, you know, certainly understanding them, hearing them and, you know, there's not much to stand on as far as something that could be done. Other comments, however, um, you know, we can help bring resolution to. It won't stay there, well, let's keep working on it, we'll just- You know, let me read. You can't keep that closed? Is that what you're saying?
I can't keep that, this open, it's open for a lot of closes.
Okay. Um, so in this particular first comment, um, I know that there's concern about, um, visual looking from the mosque into, uh, people's living space, basically, bedrooms and whatnot. And that's a concern for, uh, some of the neighbors. Um, I know that we're, you know, there's already been discussion about taking opportunities as far as lighting and all of that, so that doesn't occur. Um, and then also, you know, are the values of our home going to go down? There's a concern, we get that, um, there's not a whole lot that can be done or, you know, mitigated there, whether they go up or down. Um, so, uh, we appreciated the comments, we understand the comments, uh, in that one, but, um, let me see if I can pull it up. You won't be able to have it there, right?
Jeff, do you want to go through the comments that you and I discussed?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that because she can't, I mean, it's the same page, you're going to, you're reading off the same page.
Summarizing is, and consolidating because some of the comments have some overlap. Um, the, the first, and you can either, um, Phil and Ryan, you can either, uh, Frank, I'm sorry, can either stop me as I go or I'll run them off and then you can address them all, the, all in one batch. Um, the first is, um, a comment that we've heard before, which is with respect to appropriate buffering, headlights, the light noise, um, from, from the facility into adjoining residential. Um, there is discussion of increased runoff needed drainage, uh, that was one of the comments. Uh, one comment that I would like the applicant to address is, um, the use of an easement, an apparent easement between the site and Reynolds Road, um, that was raised by one of the property owners. Um, and I understand that there was pedestrian traffic through there. Um, one comment that, and one app, one, excuse me, comment or raises a number of questions, um, how we reviewed the historic preservation, um, of the, of the site. Um, can they show the exact elevation and drainage and how the elevation will change if approved? Um, how will they mitigate runoff? Uh, discuss the noise from the heavy, heavy machinery during the construction and construction timeline. It says where is water and sewer, I believe that's shown on the plan. Um, there's discussion, the traffic study was done considering a small congregation, how will traffic be impacted as the congregation grows and how large is the congregation? I think that's addressed already in the traffic study. Um, there was a question concerning, um, the, the traditional call to prayer and, and the volume and timing of that. Will the existing fence remain? There's a question as to, and I think this is addressed in the landscaping plan, the height of the screening trees when they're planted. Um, and this, as type, was there a change in the plan for the exterior finish to be less reflective? Um, and the second. And I think that covers the, the comments that were provided to me largely, largely overlap with the primary focus on, um, screening and buffer. I think that's basically the summary.
Synopsis, okay. So I don't know if one of you wanted to address any of those.
I'll briefly and then more of the details will be provided by Ryan. My name is Frank Phillips from the Law Office, Phillips and Miller, good evening. I'm sorry I was away, out of the country for the public hearing, but Amy nearly filled in for me. And Ryan, I had the ability though, I did review the video of the entire proceeding, so I'm familiar with what went on, uh, that particular night. As to the historical, there was back in September, first of 2022, there was a letter from Chip over to the property, not Ellen, over its medical designation, so that was taken care of, um, a while ago. As to the visual, I did hear those concerns at the, at the meeting about the visual and the buffering. I'll have Ryan get into a little bit more of the landscape, but that is going to be, there is going to be sufficient screening. Um, I think one of the things that Ryan brought up at the last meeting that was important is that, and this is going to go eventually towards our application before the ZPA. Again, we're here for the negative declaration because if you go back a little bit, we were redirected towards the zoning board in late of 2023, but then the code changed and then we had to have this coordinated review. So in order for us to move forward with the zoning board, which initially this board referred us to, we need a negative declaration to be able to do that or a determination. Um, I think that one of the things that relates to the zoning board application is that we are looking at having the parking lot between the building and the, and the road because then we will avoid even worse or excessive retaining walls and disturbances and, uh, and any type of aesthetic impacts. I'll get, Ryan will go into specifically, we had a landscape architect put together a landscaping plan to address that. Legitimate concerns will be dealt with at the last meeting, um, even prior to the public hearing was regarding the drainage and the zero runoff and again, I'm just a lawyer. Ryan will be able to go into the, those details also and the easement at Reynolds Road. Um, I believe the traffic study that I reviewed has, uh, addressed a lot of the issues. The timing and volume, um, we had it at peak times.
Yeah, the Friday, yeah.
So Friday was, that is the peak time and then, and that is addressed in the traffic study. So I'll just turn it over to Ryan to go through some of the issues, which I believe he did also at the public hearing, address the, uh, engineering. So I, I start off, Ryan, if you could, with the buffering and the screening and then the drainage.
Sure. Sit down, thank you, or you can sit or stand, I, I'm sorry, I sat down, but-
Yeah, that's okay, probably, Ryan, I, I probably should have said, you should come to the microphone, I forgot.
I have a big mouth, hopefully you're all-
Yeah, it'll, it'll probably be okay, but Ryan's a little quieter.
Oh, yeah. Well, uh, thank you for the opportunity, Ryan Nasher from Atso Nash and Ziegler. We are engineers and the surveyor for the record. Um, while we have been talking, I just took a quick note and I'm going to go over to address those, what is really came up at the prior planning board meeting, concern from the neighbor. And if I miss anything, please stop me, question me, I'm here to answer. Um, the, number one, the headlights, uh, there has been a concern for the headlight, but it's really important to let everybody know, as of right now, there is a headlight concern because the site is not improved. There is some existing tree, but doesn't have the high-density buffer area. So if at night someone would come and pray, they could, the car come in, there should be headlights. So the, the landscape architect, Steve Spasido, he actually showed how the landscape would be proposed for the site. It has been heavily screened by Green John Alvivardi at the back of the property to the both sides. And also he saved, if I'm not mistaken, 12 trees, existing tree. Anything that he could save, he saved, that, that shows in his landscaping plan. Um, he put any, every tree possible, like I, I said to the planning board meeting, you don't want to put too many trees because it's going to suffocate. There's a rule that you have to really maintain certain setbacks, so the tree could grow with the root balls and like, you know, have the full growth. And when they have the full growth, they could go up to 30 feet, 40 feet, you know, 45, with the full growth of these trees, so that's going to be a nicely screened over there.
So if I can interrupt right here?
Sure.
The size of those trees at planting, will they screen at planting?
No, the way it is work, I think they go by three and a half to four inch caliper.
Right.
And they go up to, I think the, if you go to the nursery, they, they will sell you maybe about 10 feet, maybe eight to 10 feet, that's the most you could get. Because when the tree get bigger, you have larger root balls and then you cannot really transport with that heavy root ball. So I think the nursery, they could sell up to between 10 to eight to 10 feet. If they have the larger tree, I'm going to recommend the, the applicant to put the full mature tree, anything that they have the maximum height locally available at the nursery.
So is it, we don't know exactly how tall the trees will be when planted initially?
Usually it's like eight to 10 feet.
When the cars pull in, are they going to be pulling into the side facing the, the, uh-
Not all of them, let me-
I'll hold the green.
Yeah, okay, so is the-
It's the red side.
No, it's, you're, you're good. No, it's actually the opposite.
Yeah, that's right.
No, 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 you're good. No, no, our question is which direction the car going to pull in?
Yeah.
So the car going to be this side, which is really to the north. I think the concern from the neighbor is more to the west, so that-
Yeah, but there's somebody who lives right in that corner too, so if there's cars, if the, the screening isn't going to be available several, for several years actually, once you plant it, they're going to have headlights right into their property.
Those, uh, those, well, yes, it's going to be over the years, the tree going to grow, yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
So this is a short, short-term impact?
Yeah.
For certain?
So the tree is, that's the way it is, you know, over the year they grow, uh, and that's-
Rather extended short-term impact.
Yeah, it's over the year.
Is this an issue?
But you can put like different shrubs and stuff that will be low enough, it'll be high enough and, and more dense to the ground too.
But, but this, so this, the person on the corner is going to have to wait until the trees grow. You, the parking can't go like, pull in like facing the mosque instead? You know, if they pull in and park that way instead of parking towards the customer, the, the, the other residents? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know, I just-
Sorry. Oh, the legis, okay, there's a delay? Well, they, they don't have the at-night services. At night, if I'm not mistaken, at night, let me pull out the information. The fifth pair, they have eight o'clock or eight fifteen, they have about 15 attendees. They don't have the large gathering at night.
15 attendees is-
15, so the car going to be more of, we could really put a note that they, at night, they should really start using this parking space, which we have 29.
Mm-hmm.
So this parking space is going to fill by half. The remaining is going to be all empty at night, they don't have the services at night. It's, it's really the daytime. And over here, they have the 30-foot landscaping buffer, existing landscaping buffer.
Well, the whole point of the mosque is that the congregation is expected to grow. So that 15 that's present now, that number's not going to remain stable.
Well, the grow by definition is really the peak use is a Friday prayers and which is at, uh, one, between one o'clock and 1:20 PM, that's the-
Afternoon.
Yeah, in, in, in the afternoon. And the large event they have in the morning, in the daylight. At night, they have always a low crowd, so regardless of the growth, it's really the at night, they have the low use by the congregation. If I'm not mistaken, is that-
Yeah, I want to say something if you're all in.
Please, sure.
Regarding the, uh, coming in and going out, we announced in the prayer time that when you come to the place to park, face towards the building, not towards the neighborhood. So they already started, nobody parked or, I mean, facing towards the neighborhood anymore.
Okay, but the, the proposed parking is facing towards the neighbors. The proposed park. If you're pulling in and your headlights are going to be going into the neighbors.
Okay, so when you say the neighbor, which neighbor?
Well, there's one there, you have a bunch, but there's one there that will have nothing protecting them.
Yeah.
So that, I'm just wondering what can be done about that.
No. Like I said, the headlight is really at the at night and at night they have the service, uh, like a very, yeah. So the, the, the large gathering they have is in the daytime. They have Sunday and also the large event twice a year, that is start from eight o'clock in the morning. If they have the two pairs, they would go nine o'clock in the morning, if I'm not mistaken, the, the daytime.
And the night times, Ryan, are on Fridays?
Nighttime, no, nighttime is a every, no, every day is a, is a-
Every day?
Every day. Nighttime, they have about 15 attendees.
So why won't the nighttime grow? You're saying it won't grow or it grows, it'll always be lower?
Yes.
Why is that?
It's because, uh, when you have the growth of the congregation, mostly they attend on Friday. The five times a pray, so the morning, which is starting from six o'clock in the morning, this is the first prayer, second prayer, not including the Friday, one o'clock, third prayer, three o'clock in the afternoon, fourth one, four thirty in the afternoon, and the last one after sundown, which is around eight o'clock, it, time varies and now we say 30-ish. Those are always low, regardless of the growth, they have always, all the congregation that I have represented in Rockland County, in Orange County, they have the similar pattern. If you see the growth, the growth you're going to see on Friday prayer and also the large event. They don't really get to go all the congregation on the low traffic time, which I mentioned to you, at night it's going to be 15, maybe 20. So let's say the growth is, I don't know, let's say they have 200 people show up on Friday, but at nighttime, it's going to be not exceeding about 15 or 20.
What's your capacity?
The capacity?
200.
Capacity they have right now, maybe about 250, 300.
In your building, what will you be able to hold in your building?
Absolutely, yes, they have probably-
200 total.
In their write-up is 230. The number they're using is 230.
And what's the current, the current number, Ryan, coming, just, I mean, average?
The current number, like on Fridays?
Uh, just during the week.
During the week? During the week?
Just average.
Can I say something regarding the, why people coming Friday, more people than about night? Thing is, Friday is mandatory to come to the mosque anywhere in the world. That is for about 45 minutes.
And what time is that?
One to two P.M.
That's the afternoon, okay.
We had a breakdown that we gave you last time, one to two P.M., the maximum, you know, if you're going to have a lot of people, is 1:50, but then these other times that you're saying at nighttime, it's 10 to 12 people at night, sunset, five people, three to four P.M., three people, 1 P.M., one to three people, one to three, and sunrise, five to 10.
What's the present capacity in the mosque? Present capacity in the mosque is what, Mr. Forbes?
Present. Present capacity?
Yes.
What is the present capacity? I don't know.
It's a single family house, so basically what we did, we break down inside some portion, so it is very tight of situation there, so we cannot allow people, you know, uh-
Is it 30 people? Is it 40 people?
How many maximum you have in there? I think they could go maybe about like 80.
Less than that, about 60 people down.
60 now?
About, yeah.
So you're in quadruple, roughly quadruple of capacity. So why wouldn't the Friday prayers go from 15 to 60?
So that's what I'm saying, actually I am not done what I was trying to explain you. So as I said, that it is mandatory all over the world to come to the mosque Fridays. So people who is driving from anywhere, for example, near Jersey or near city or driving, you know, other people coming for shopping or job purpose, they all join nearby mosque, not our people. So basically I would say, uh, more than one-third people, they coming by driving from anywhere because of mandatory, they find the mosque, they come and pray and live, it is Friday only. But I have another thing to say that other times, meaning from morning to night, that prayer, it is not mandatory to come to the mosque. So people come from work, if they feel okay, just go and pray in the mosque, they come, but most of the people, you know, they are tired or in the morning they have work, so nighttime, very, very less, sometimes two people. So the number we say 250, that is maximum, but you can visit, you will not see many people at time, at nighttime. Myself, I go only one or two times nighttime.
People they could also pray at home, right, at night?
Yeah.
It's like, it's like church, church or big time is for most, I don't know, not all of it. It's Sunday, Sunday morning, you have a mass of a lot of people. People go to church during the week. My route, my grandparents used to go during the week all the time, but there's only five or 10 people there.
Yeah, no, I think the question that Fred's asking, and it's good to put it on the record anyway, but, um, is, if you grow, you're at 60 now, just to say, ballpark, just, we'll throw that as the number. And if you grow four times that, which would be the, you know, um, 240 people, just to say, it goes there. Wouldn't it make sense to, or, you know, wouldn't the reason then, the reasoning of it be that on the evenings, it would also grow, not at the same rate, but percentage-wise, because you'll get local people, let's say, and they would come, so if you have 15 now, why wouldn't it go to 60?
No, it, it will not happen, never ever.
No, I, okay, so let me answer it, no, this is a very good question, okay. It's a, it's a very good question, the way you're looking at the data for the future, right? And the way I could really answer it, I'm representing the mosque and Islamists in Rockland is in Valley Cottage in Rockland County. Their congregation is almost double, so the way we look at the data, they have the similar pattern in the evening, like the, what he said mandatory and what Frank said, hey, and on Sunday, people go to church. There's, there's a reason why they pick one, once a week. So in, uh, Woodbury, you know, the, the mosque and center is actually on Friday. If you look at the growth for the proportion, it doesn't really go by the same, you know, the proportion when that nighttime or, let's say off season, off hour and peak hour, okay? That doesn't really add up. And just to give an example for that Islamist in Rockland that we do see, they have the same thing. They have 15, 20, usually people there who are retired, okay, they would go that, you know, people who are working individual, we don't see that.
And how many people are at that center?
At center, we had last, like recent year, they have probably about 450. So what they did, they actually hold two services. They couldn't really accommodate that many people, so they did the two services, but they never had a problem with that off-peak congregation, you know, the evening time. Evening time is always like 15, 20, 15, 20, you know, this kind of things. Um, we also presenting the other mosque in Valley Cottage in Rockland County. They have the same, their, their building is much smaller. So what they do on the Friday, they have probably three times more capacity, so they're holding three prayers. It's because they have, they can really accommodate, but evening time, same thing, it's like, you know, the number is too low. So regardless of the growth, the numbers is really get limited, you know? I mean, I said like in about 15, you said 12, the range is between 10 and 15. That doesn't really go with the proportion.
So, all right, let me ask you another question about the landscape, it's same, same subject that we're on. If the trees you get are eight feet, just to say, right, because that'd be the minimum. If they're eight feet, what's the projection on when that'll block those headlights?
It, like I said, I'm not landscape architect, but I would just give the, you know, assumption. It going to be for next few years, I would say like three, four years down the line? They grow with the full growth, hog, wider?
How, how high up are the headlights compared to the tree?
I think the headlights-
It's where the building is versus the-
I know, that's wrong, that's what I'm saying.
Well, they're a little elevated-
Yeah.
-over where the other people are, so the headlights aren't coming in on their main floor, they're coming in on their living.
Could you pull out the plan? I think the headlight, if I'm, my understanding, the headlight, it should come in, I don't know, which is the neighborhood, okay, there you go. I thought the headlight is, the concern is over here, if I'm not mistaken, right?
That was, that was one of them also. That was, that was one of them also, but also you, you have one other person down in the corner.
Can I bring?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
There's, oh.
There is a gentleman here.
Hello? There's, there's nothing blocking him. Many of his, very vocal, shingles are also very vocal. So I think this is the, uh, the Caribbean rafting one we spoke about, lights coming in and people seeing children, so you got quite, quite a bit of exposure there.
So this is one other time, many of his property there, right? It's gonna be all blocked by the proposed building there, so you don't have the issue with the parking. Over there...
And that's assuming this plan goes through.
Exactly.
Right.
But right now, the building is pretty much, the building is over there.
The current parking lot is not quite...
Right, so the bill, you're saying, Ryan, the building will mitigate that?
But existing, I went to the site a couple of times, their parking is to the front, they don't have any parking to the back door. If I'm not mistaken, are you parking to the back?
No, no parking, no.
On your busy day, do you park back there, though?
No.
For the present, you don't?
No, no park goes in the back.
Because it's a landscape grass area, you can't really have the car to park there.
You can park on grass.
They have...
I mean, you can.
You don't think you don't wanna kill the grass, yeah?
Right.
Nobody's parking on my yard.
But I think there were pictures submitted that showed parking back there.
But I...
There's certain conditions that can be made.
On a, on a, on a, you know, one of the holy days, I understand that, if you needed other ones, but, all right. So that's gonna take care of that, what the, now the lighting on that, the building. What you're proposing with trees and everything will, will get rid of the lighting from the building?
Well, the, the landscaping does two things, of course, and when, once it is spinning, you can see the proposed building and a proposed lighting. But at, the lighting comes in at the evening, so we're trying to make a point that in order for you to have someone to park there, it has to fill up the whole thing. Right now, they have the gravel parking in front of the building that they have right now. People, they're parking, they, I'm, I'm just going back to memory. They would just drive over there with existing access road and then park.
Right, there's no lined spots.
No, no.
Right.
It's gravel.
Right, so they're parking where they park.
And the building is over there, they would park, they would walk there, but it's over here, they have the existing trees and these, the grass is on the slope. I'm trying to remember. So I, I never see the people that park on the, on the back, so, I mean...
That's, that's...
No, don't park there, no.
There's no parking back there now.
Because what you have is the main building, you have a tent, and then you have the barn.
Correct.
And I have never seen any cars beyond the building.
Well, the point is, this is pre-construction anyway.
Beyond the building, it slopes down into the development behind it, and I don't think anybody wants to park back there now.
Right, so...
And there's a huge prop, it's about eight, even feet prop, I don't think the vehicle can get there with that...
Right, but if that plan goes through, if this one is, you know, variances are granted, then what you're saying is, the, of the house you were just talking about, it's mitigated 'cause the building blocks it from the...
Correct.
From the vehicles. So, okay, so that's a screening of sorts.
Yes.
Right?
And all these things will be conditioned to the site plan. Right now, we're just at the stage of trying to get to the Z B A with the negative declaration.
Totally get it.
But there are certain conditions that this planning board, when we, if we, after we go to the Z B A comes back, there's certain conditions you can put to the site plan.
I, I think, though, just for procedural, yes, we're only here for a neg deck, but we have to make sure that, and I, we wanna make sure that the comments with respect to hard look and environmental impact are addressed.
Which is really important in this...
I'm not minimizing, I'm just saying that you also have another second bite at the apple when you, in a sense of putting certain conditions to limit these things that you're bringing up now, I get that.
Right.
Um, I do, if I can, uh, Mr. Chair, may I? Um, I, I do just, um, wanna switch gears, the one comment, and again, I wasn't here for the meeting, so I'm relying on notes and what was presented to me. I'm not as good as Frank, I didn't watch the whole video. With respect to the discussion of the easement and utilizing that easement for pedestrian traffic, I just wanted something on the record with respect to that, that easement. There was a claim, and I don't know its veracity, um, that folks were walking back and forth through there.
Easement, you're talking about the water easement?
Reynolds Road, you said?
Yeah.
So...
Right.
The comments, the comments reflects that there were people walking, walking back and forth. Um, unless there is some sort of other easement or maintenance to drainage management, I would encourage the congregation and will put, if that's acceptable to you, not to use that as a walking path.
So the, the, there is no drainage easement proposed, we are not using any drainage easement because
Right.
at one point, we reach out to the neighbor and this...
Well, there's a, there, just to be clear, there's an existing easement that's marked on your map, which is fine, but I don't, there is an allegation that there was pedestrian traffic over that area through the neighbor's property, and obviously, unless there is a confirmed ingress and ingress easement, I would ask the congregation not use that as a means of access.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yes.
And as a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna get that on record, that's not...
But I will, I will just reconfirm here, so could you step forward here? No, I think what they're saying at one point in the past, maybe the congregation was using the secondary access, you were thinking of like a, when the Reynolds Road, that is now, never, it's not, no longer in use, that, right?
We stopped there, what I would say, about four years ago.
Okay. I just, so long as it's on record that it's blocked and it's not to be incurred, look, we're not gonna stop, somebody cuts through somebody's yard, I can't stop that, but as the applicant and as the congregation, if you tell your congregants, and I know that's the right word, um...
We have no problem putting note in there, no access will be allowed on Reynolds Road. We have no problem putting note in there.
Right, because we blocked that one.
Okay, fine.
Probably blocked.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll make that as a, we'll make that as a note.
Okay.
That way I can... I think so.
Yeah.
I just, it's, it's an easy one, we can cross off our list.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see what he uses.
Well, this is not easement itself, it's just the longest area, 'cause that's where the connection is, the Reynolds Road.
People would just cut through there. No, 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 that's the point, there, it's been blocked.
So that's amenable to you guys to put a condition in for that?
Yeah, we have no problem.
Okay, so I think that addresses that.
Okay, all right, what's your next comment?
Now, you know, talking to the easement, there was a question if there is a water easement there, okay? The very first thing we did, we reached out to the title insurance company to see if there's any information there. They are able to pull out the deed information that shows the water easement information. And what I was talking to, like Frank was making presentation, I was able to pull out the email, and I forwarded that to David Higgins and Elizabeth Cassidy, and they have the information as of right now. So there is a legal easement, that's for the water.
Yeah, it's for both water, wide water easement right here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that we're aware, that we're aware of, all right, um...
And that was discussed with, uh, John Rook, and one of the options was, how are you gonna show the proposed water line? We have the option to go directly on Orange Turnpike or using this, uh, the existing easement, uh, to the Reynolds Road.
And you're representing, that's, that's recorded in all the deeds? Not just, not just in your chain of title, it's in...
It's from the title insurance company.
It's in, it's in the adjoining owner's chain of title as well you're representing?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
So the question is, the easement is reflected in all the, the chains of title?
The, the, the existing easement, the water easement.
Yeah. But is it reflected in all the chains of title?
Is it even relevant, aren't you going out to Orange Turnpike?
No. That was my next question, but...
You're not using...
No, the, the water line we are using on the, uh, on the Reynolds Road. There is no water connection of the...
No, there's a report, there's a reported water easement. When we first started the project, the issue was, they were hoping to get sewer and water in the same easement, but then the easement is limited to water and not sewer, and the adjoining owner would cooperate. So there is a reported water easement, that and that.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So you were looking for sewer easement?
That's why, we had to switch the gear, switch gears and pump out to the front.
Right.
Correct.
Because we couldn't demonstrate, they couldn't demonstrate that they had sufficient title to do that.
So that top comment that, that was just up a second ago, just went away, that's not valid, then?
Which one?
The easement, the, it may be invalid?
It may be invalid.
I think that was...
Unannounced, trying to negotiate easement, was that...
That was the walking, that was the pedestrians walking.
Walking through.
Oh, okay.
Oh, the access easement, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Talking the access, okay, all right, okay.
That was, that was, that's how I read that.
Okay.
Um, just to keep this on pace, we talked about the start, we talked about, I think the plans show the elevation, I don't think you, I think that is addressed. Runoff, I think, is addressed in your, um, proposed...
So Elizabeth, I have a question that, you know, just because I know that, that was a big concern of the, the neighbors, is the, is the flooding, the runoff.
I would defer to Dave, but I'm pretty sure that should...
No, I, I think really what more I'm getting at, Dave, you know, and to the applicant, is if for some reason the engineering plan doesn't work, you know, is there a commitment to saying, no, this has to work? We will, we'll re-engineer it otherwise, you know what I'm saying?
Right, okay.
If for some reason it's not sufficient.
We've already reviewed the stormwater pollution prevention plan, we basically just asked for some more information as it relates to their flow to the, uh, the culvert on the road.
Yep.
And showing that it has the capacity for that, and also to quantify the reduction of the stormwater runoff that's going off property, uh, I guess it's to the north, I think, off to the adjacent properties. There's a reduction, but they haven't quantified the reduction.
Right, that's the, that, and that's the big piece.
And also, we had a very good discussion, Dave, over the phone, but, but Dave and I talked, I said, okay, it's gonna be very helpful for the planning board and also for the neighbor to analyze how much of the water going to the neighbor property now, okay? Versus when we do the improvement, how much water gets there. That one will be happy to break down, which is really a most recent comment, we're gonna just, we're gonna provide it to quantify. The way we did for the overall, and then it shows the overall improvement, and it shows a major drainage improvement for the property, to the back property, it's actually in, uh, to the... Yeah. So right now, it really makes a little puddle, because it's really dropped down, it's kind of like a puddle area. There is the existing drainage problem. So what we have done is really cut off all of it with the building, and also do the landscaping and the grading such a way the water actually gets there to the, to the grass area, and the rooftop, lower rooftop and the upper rooftop, we are taking everything to the front. One goes there, that the, uh, the square shape, the dark line over there.
Hmm.
That's for the lower roof, and the upper roof, it goes to the next, the catch basin.
Right, and those are catch basins there, right?
These are proposed catch basins. And it's, everything goes to the underground infiltration.
Right.
And on top of, all those parks is a porous asphalt, like, you know, it's like in a pond, and then all the water gets there.
Yeah, permeates.
I don't see any water gets there, that's what David Higgins said, Ryan, the way you did is great, but just show a breakdown with a table, hey, existing, half of the water gets there. Proposed, majority, all of them, except the grass area. And you have the tree and the grass area, you don't see any runoff there, it's just like all, like natural...
So it should be a noticeable improvement for the neighbors?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be happy to come up with a number and quantify and say, hey, this is a table, this is the most proposed, and show the percentage, how much improved, we'll be done with that improvement, that, that should...
Got it. Okay, good.
All right, um, I think that this, this next just topic and it's, it's two parts. Noise, just construction, construction timeline, um, that's, and then just if we could have a discussion, um, I understand traditionally there's a call to prayer, and remind me what's the last, the latest that, of, of time that ended?
Oh, the latest time? We could add the information, but I think, uh, my recollection was the last pair time is eight o'clock at night.
Okay.
Is that right? Eight o'clock at night, again, the time varies, like, depending on the sun, you know, the, the...
So the last call, so that's when the last call to prayer would be at, and what's your, what are you doing currently?
Currently, I mean, the current, uh, the...
Yes.
What's the latest prayer time?
No, it's not necessarily the, the, the auto, I'm talking about the audible call to, call to prayer. My understanding is it's, you have an internal call to prayer, like...
Okay, I have a second.
Yeah, not, not when, not what time you physically pray, the, the sound, that, that you have a prayer that is over a loudspeaker.
Actually, it is, uh, they do in, inside the house, and it doesn't go outside.
Okay, and will that continue under the new project?
Always.
Always.
So we'll put a condition that that continues?
Yeah.
Okay, that answers.
Of course, of course, yeah.
So the, so you'll make a condition that that remains always internal?
Yes.
Never external?
Even you go parking lot, you won't hear that.
Okay.
Only inside the house.
Okay.
No matter what they...
And you see that even after the new construction and the building and everything?
No, never. We're not allowed to do that outside, only inside we hear that or...
Okay.
If you go parking lot, you won't hear that.
I think that addresses, I think that addresses that, um...
Right, you know the only question I have on this, um...
Where are you going?
No, it's just a question, and it's a legal question, is, you know, by law, um, the planning board has to take the hard look, right? So we know that. And this is to issue the neg deck, so does this become a condition in the neg deck? Because that's where it's being looked at for seeker, not in the final approval.
So it would be the, I would include a statement with respect to volume, that I would include a statement in our negative declaration, that members of the public raise concerns about the volume and carry of the traditional call to prayer, and that the applicant has agreed on that condition to carry over into the approval.
Right, so...
By virtue, by virtue of them leaving it in, internal to their facility, there's no external audibility, and based on that, you don't see an environmental impact because there's no external sound.
No, I totally get that, so my question then becomes, and it's more, again, it's a legal question, I don't know the answer. The, the, um, if it's a condition in the neg deck, that triggers a thirty-day delay?
No, we're not, it would, it would just be how the applicant addressed it, I don't treat that as a condition under the neg deck. Because the applicant's making a part of their proposal, I don't see that as...
All right, so then, in the final approval of this...
That's not a, that doesn't make it a conditional neg deck, I don't think.
Something like that would not.
Conditional neg deck means they go physically do something else, they go get another approval or go do something.
Right, and I don't, that's why I'm asking, so, and if that's the case, then...
I wouldn't...
Right, so then, that's gonna be a, a, a permanent condition in the site plan approval?
Yeah, we'll, we'll rope it into all three docs.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. But I think, I think if that's the commitment, then I don't think, I think it's a non-issue now.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Um... And then with respect to the exterior finish, um, I would say the neg deck has not, it does not affect architectural review, and that will be part of, once they come back, over architectural review. All right, so I would throw the exterior finish there.
Is that the end of the comments? Is there more comments? Uh, somebody asked, was there a change in the plan for the exterior finish to be less light reflected?
Architectural review, I just bumped that down.
Right, okay, you bumped that down? And what about the existing fence remaining, you putting that under A B, A R B as well?
There is no existing fence, uh, at one point, it was a fence and part of the fence was really going, uh, neighboring property, so it wasn't really, the question is, whose fence is that one?
It was an internal fence, right?
Exactly, it's like, uh, yeah, it's a cascade.
And it's not entirely clear what fence they're talking about.
Yeah. So there is no fence at this point, and then the reason there is no, the fence has been removed because in the proposed site plan did not propose any kind of fence, because it's a natural grade, we are keeping, uh, as many trees possible with the landscaping, so there's no point to have, uh, fence in the landscaping area.
Are there any more questions from the board on anything that... Are there any more questions from the board on anything that was brought up? Or did you get all the answers that we're looking at? And our role here, as you folks probably know, is just, you know, getting the comments from the community.
Absolutely.
And us following through on those comments, so I want to make sure everybody got their, their comments.
I tend to think we ought to schedule a site visit where the boundaries of this building are mapped out by the applicant for us with balloons showing the height of this building. That's what I think we should do. Before moving forward to the negative declaration, we want to take a hard look at this. This is, I think, a unique building, I don't know of any other building that's gonna dominate its residential neighbors like this one is in the Village of Monroe, and I think the board should see it.
Uh, are there thoughts on that?
I would like to see the same thing also, so we can actually know what it is we're looking at.
How is this building, we're looking at.
We have the rendering there, usually the balloon test you'd do for like a cell tower or a water tower type of buildings. And the rendering we have, and that has the information, the profile, how the height can look like. Because balloon test is really typically you'd do for the tower, like a cell tower or through a water tower project that has the height impacted going up to the.
Higher, right.
Like in a higher, you see how you do the balloon test. Um, I haven't seen that you would have the, um, the building that has the balloon test. And the height of the building, we have, uh, it shows forty feet, up to forty feet, doesn't mean it's a forty feet, because there is an issue with the definition of the building, and it's, you know, we had a long discussion with your building inspector. The, the reason it's forty feet is actually technically it should be thirty-six feet, but the parapet wall, the code doesn't know how to put in there, is that?
Right.
And then.
The wall is technically the exam.
Exam.
Four feet.
Correct.
Not counted.
It's not counted.
This, this is a case where we wouldn't even, we believe, it's, there's a lot of ambiguity in the height. Uh, the, the code relating to height, so we're just asking for the variance to cover ourselves, because it's uh, confusing, to say the least, on how it can be calculated, so. We could deal with certain, those aspects during the site plan, but it's not like this is gonna be enormously high building, that we need a huge height variance. In fact, I don't think we even need a height variance, I think it'd be, the way it, but the code's written in a way that you can't determine it. I, is that the best I can say?
You know, what we're trying to say is that we want to see, physically see where that's gonna be.
I know.
Okay, 'cause that, it, it might be shorter than we're thinking, and it might be taller than we're thinking, so we might, we, we want to get out there and maybe take a look at this and see the parameters of where everything's going to be situated, because it, it does slope up there, and it is difficult to imagine a forty foot building on top of that slope not dominating the area.
We don't have a problem with that during the site process, but I don't think you need to have that done before a negative declaration.
Well, i- in, I don't, if the purpose is to see that, because that's impact.
Yeah, but, um, that you've looked at the, the, you've taken a hard look at those particular concerns that were raised. The part of what we're going for here, it's kind of ironic that this is like a catch twenty-two situation, is that we still have to go to the zone. We were referred by this board to the zoning board, at the time, they couldn't act, because then the code was changed, like I said before. I don't mean this to sound like a broken record, but this is what happened. So now, we can't go to the zoning board and get what we want until we come back here and get a negative declaration. We can't go to the zoning board, because one of the issues for the zoning board, besides having the parking lot in between the building and the road, is a height variance, and that is the variance that the zoning board is looking at, and now you're telling us before a negative declaration to put up balloons, when we have a rendering. So I think it's just a catch twenty-two that we're gonna keep going. Our next step is to go before the Z B A. There's plenty of things that go on subsequent to a determination by the Z B A, and the determination by the planning board of negative declaration, the determination of the Z B A. The Z B A is gonna be looking, taking a hard look at that, because we have to ask for a variance.
Well, they might be, but they're not the only ones. We also are, are obviously gonna take a hard look at that ourselves. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Phillips, we're, we're supposed to take into account the, the aesthetic significance of this building on the neighborhood, correct? We, I mean, that's part of our job, that's part of the hard look, we're all supposed to.
We provided a rendering as to what the heights are gonna be, the site plan and everything else.
Okay.
And then we have to go before the zoning board to get a, to get a variance that I don't think we even need, because the code is ambiguous, but what we asked for, just in case there's an issue.
Right, you're saying that rendering should suffice for us, but I don't know if it does.
I'm not saying suffice, for this particular purpose, I'm saying suffice. I'm saying that there's still a lot to go through here, we're still back, we're back to this board again, because again, that we couldn't go to the zoning board, because we need a negative declaration. We have a coordinated review, we have the review, we had a public hearing, we've done, we've done, uh, everything that we've had that we've been asked to do, we've done. At that point, now we're here for a negative declaration, we still have to go to the zoning board, and we still have to come back to you, and we still have to deal with those issues.
So I think, I think my only question.
Can I, may I ask a, a legal procedural question? What?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said no.
How dare you?
No, Elizabeth, no.
Thanks, Jeff, don't let me get my job. And I'm just thinking this out, and I, and I do understand that we have a chicken, we have a chicken or egg.
Well, sort of, sort of.
Sort of. The question is for the applicant, following the applicant, the rationale that, um, Mr. Phillips just laid out, is that we're gonna come back. If there's a new piece of information, are, are you prepared for the, the neg deck to be reevaluated? If there's a new piece of information, such as what the board described, coming back to you, that's, I guess, I'm just trying to think procedural.
Right, so that's what I'm thinking, when the board has to take a hard look, the hard look, hard look is under seeker. We issue a negative declaration, then that's, that's, that's passed.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? So that's what I, I'm, I'm thinking that you're bringing up, Member Kelly is bringing up. So my question to you, Elizabeth, is, you know, and it's again a legal question, is if we were to approve that today without doing what?
If you, if you adopt a negative declaration.
If we adopt a negative declaration.
You conclude seeker.
Right.
Unless there is some new fact that comes to, to light, some that justifies reopening seeker, but typically when you adopt the negative declaration.
Right, so then what Member Kelly's asking for is moot. Right, is that correct?
Not really.
Well, it would be, because seeker would be closed.
But that, that doesn't matter, because at that point, in a way, it doesn't matter, because you're still gonna have, like I said, the zoning board, then we have to come back to you anyway.
Right, but seeker, but.
Based upon what you know.
No, I understand, I understand, I, I'm, what I'm trying to figure out, and it's more of a legal thing, that I don't have the answer to, is if we issue a negative declaration tonight, and what Member Kelly is asking for is under seeker, that's part of our review is seeker. If we say it's a neg deck, then, you know, and I, this is to protect the applicant as well, because if, if something came up later or, or whatever, and we didn't take the hard look, that, that, that could be problematic.
Well, I think this qualifies as a hard look.
What is the this that qualifies the hard look?
What's been going on for the last two meetings, and the last three meetings.
I agree with you, I think, I, I, I do agree with that, I think that's part of, so my, but my question becomes, all my question is, and Elizabeth, it's really for you, is is that then seeker closed, and does what Member Kelly's asking for, it's a moot point after this?
We still ask for it even when we come back to this.
But, but if seeker's closed, you can't ask for it, you can ask.
We can, we can ask for it, but what's the, the question becomes, what's the benefit of the information once we have it?
Right, exactly, that's, that's really more what I'm asking.
The timing of the receipt of the information, that's, that's the question. With respects to seeing it on the, on the site, we obviously have, we have the proposed, we have the proposed site plan, um, that's, that's a poor decision. Do I, do I generally agree, we typically don't see balloon tests for buildings at this height?
If every single application that came before a board, a planning board, required a balloon test or a height test for every building that's proposed, whether it be commercial, residential, it, it would go on forever.
No, I, I understand that too.
That's why we don't do it for everyone.
No, I know.
Isn't it irrelevant if, let's just say for argument's sake, it meets the zoning, then you have no right to tell them.
Sure we do, sure we do.
But it doesn't meet the zoning, it, it doesn't meet the zoning.
I'm saying if it did meet the zoning, let's just say it was thirty-five feet.
Right.
You wouldn't be asking for the balloon test if it met the zoning.
It met the zoning.
They're going to the zoning board because they need a variance, they're gonna be taking that hard look at that height variance, they're gonna have a public hearing.
And we're being penalized by playing it safe, because if you look at, you could look at it, have your attorney look at it, if you look at the height, the, the code as it, as it relates to height, I don't think we even need the variance. And then pursuant to the code, if we're in compliance with the code, you can't require us to do it. We're being nice, saying that we'll do whatever you guys want, I think during this whole proceeding, they, they've been doing whatever you guys want. But now, to come to this where we already have to go before Z B A for what you wanna look at? I don't know, if every building required of flying balloons for, for a commercial site or a, or residential site, I think that would, I think that that's not proper, I really don't.
No, I think for us, uh, to be honest with you, it's much more, um, there's a little bit new ground as far as, you know, where the buildings go and the codes, the, that have changed in the, in, so this is us talking through it, uh, at this point, you know what I mean? More than anything else, so, and, you know, that's what I'm looking at, so if, if there is an issue, you know, you can't come back and, and bite at the apple, you know what I'm saying, it's.
But Jim is, Jim is correct, because in turn, with respect to the height, the height meets code.
Height meets code, we still have to take into account the aesthetic character, and it's in fact.
That's for architectural review though.
Well, there's, we should do that now as part of the negative declaration.
But that's not what, that's not what seeker is for and to be done, it's to take a hard look at everything, it's not to load up everything upfront. Seeker, determination of negative declaration is not an approval or disapproval by a zoning board or a planning board. As long as it's taken a hard look and the, and the applicant has responded to those issues, then at that point, that, that, then it can be determined as being proper. This thing can't be front-loaded like that, that's not proper for our client to spend that amount of money and that amount of time just to get a negative declaration. We still have to go to a Z B A for what you're asking for, the balloons to be flown for, which I don't think they have to be flown, and to, and we have to still go for site plan approval.
Well, listen, I think the, we can, we can play that two ways, we could ask for an E I S as well.
I know.
We didn't do that.
I know that.
So we, we got an expensive, so I, I would say, looking at that, if I was the attorney for them, I would say, thank you.
I did say, I said, we tend to comply, I did, it's.
I understand.
Thank you, we're not giving anything, we're not getting anything, so on so forth, we're working with you, it's very clear that we're working with you.
And, and we're working with you.
So, so I'm not turning this into adversarial process, but I have to protect my client.
And we have to do what law, the law requires.
I agree. And I don't think the law requires that to be done before seeking.
And I appreciate your opinion.
So Jeff, about the building height, we actually went back and forth, back and forth, and if you look at the new code, thirty-five feet allowed, and then it could go up to three percent, then you don't have to go to the Z B A, okay? And then, like I said.
So up to three percent.
Of the height, that means you could go up to one foot, let's say thirty-five plus one, thirty-six, you're good, okay? Now, the parapet wall, it is really a gray area, and then the previous Z B A meeting that we went, they couldn't figure out, they said, okay, we're gonna look into it. That's why we're gonna have the meeting tomorrow, that's gonna be a deep discussion on how they're gonna determine. So when we sat down with your engineer, they said, okay, let's go for to the safe side, go up to, if you look at the, the ballot table, we said up to forty feet. Just to be safe, we don't wanna come back to the Z B and the planning board, go back and forth. So technically, technically, you don't need the height variance, because it meets the code.
Right.
So, and.
We understand that.
And that's why I made, I apologize if I'm disrespectful to anybody, but the balloon test, when you have something that meet the height variance.
Yeah.
In my career, I never said that, because, you know, this is usually the cell tower, when it's really visible, obviously, and of course for the water tower, you know, you would do that. That, that's my career that I'm just making a statement, never said that.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do, Ryan, i- is we're trying to, you know, run that, you know, between the community and between the applicant, that's, and that's where we find ourselves, right? So we're trying to answer all their questions and, and do it in a, in a way that, that makes sense, and, you know, and is not, is, is not costly, we're, we're, you know, we are sensitive to that.
Understood, yeah.
On that level, so, so I think this is much more of a dialogue than it is a, a hard, you know, a hard and fast decision, we're, we're talking it through.
No, I, I, I really appreciate, let's say, when we get the neg deck, right, and prior to the final, you gotta do the balloon test to look at the height, right? Typically, the mitigation gonna be, you really work with the, the texture, the color, you know, to see like a blend in, to see how you do the mitigate. You don't say, hey, you have the height, okay, the project is shut down, it's not like that, it's, we are, we've been working with you since day one, and we'll be working, but we need to get really moving, get it stopped.
Right.
And, and that's why I don't think it's really significant looking at the balloon test now, when we have the majority of the negative impact, you know, the, the concern that we address. It's just a matter of, again, we are not asking for the final approval here, or for limited.
No, I get it, our, our thing here, it's, it, it is a final approval on seeker. That, that's, that's why we're asking these questions, 'cause that is the final, when we issue a negative deck, that's the final. So that approval's final, there's still other things that need to be approved, the overall site plan and so forth, so, and that's why the, the question comes up. And I would just say, uh, for you, Elizabeth, just for the record, the things that you, um, just grouped together and put under the A R B, those are things that the A R B can decide and approve, unapprove, whatever, that go into the final approval.
Correct, so color of the build, things like.
Right.
The color of the building.
Right.
The, um, the design of the building, so really, now when you focus on site, and I'm, Dave, jump on in if I get this, you know, if I say anything you, I disagree with. The impacts are on the site, the building may take a different shape or might differ from the architectural renderings. The stormwater is not going to alter based on that different, uh, that different shape of the building, so long as it complies with, it's, it's a whatever, and I'm gonna use twenty thousand square foot building, right? If it's twenty thousand square feet this way versus.
Right.
This way, it's twenty thousand square feet, so we're, and also, the neg deck, they can always go smaller, they can always make the building smaller.
Right.
From what our neg deck, what our neg deck is. From a procedural standpoint, um, the zoning board of appeals cannot act until we've adopted a neg deck. You can always reopen a neg deck, if there's new information that comes to light, I'll make something up, a search, make, uh, make my point. All of a sudden, a month from now, they discover that there is a historical burial ground from seventeen hundred and two on the site, and every, you know, we did our due diligence, we got our shipboat letter, they gave, you know, we, we did all that, and nobody, nobody, the, the village is sorry, we don't know whatever, you know, it's. So, any of that, there are lots of, anything can happen, right? So you do, I did, I did draft a neg deck, I'm happy to go through it.
Right, so just real quick then, right before we do that, any other questions from the board? Or comments?
Because part of the issue too, with the locate, just one comment on the locating of the site, and I don't generally have an objection requesting the location of the site, is, they won't know that location until the Z B A takes action, they can't confirm that location.
Right, so.
They, they can confirm it the one they're planning right now.
Right, but if that relief is denied, that iteration's moved.
That's why it's a catch.
That's where it's a catch twenty-two, I get that.
Besides the height, we have to still get the variance for having the building.
If they, if they don't get that, if they don't get that.
Yeah, it's an unusual situation for us too, you know, everybody got caught in the middle here.
So, I think there is still some, some wiggle room with respects to the approvals and conditions upon it, and like I said, it, again, the Z B A action is a prime example of something that could change. If the Z B A does not grant the relief, we're reopening this, we have to, we have to reopen this.
Right, I understand that.
So, I did, I did go through, I'll, I'll try to summarize, I'm not gonna, to read verbatim, um, because we've been here for, okay? We did receive a full environmental assessment form dated August first, twenty twenty-two, last revised June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. And then, I've drafted this in such a way that I've assumed you're going to adopt a neg deck. The proposed action, um, will connect to existing community and. The proposed action will connect to existing community and water, water and sewer services. They're expected to be approximately thirty-six hundred eighty gallons per day utilizing water savings fixtures. The applicant proposes to connect the sewage via a horse main through the front of the building, which will run along Orange Turnpike and connecting to the main sewer on Coffee Road. Sewer services will be provided from Orange County Sewer District number one, and a sewer connection will be required to the existing sewer main. Any approval will be subject to the capacity at the Harriman Sewage Treatment Plant. The village does not anticipate sewer and water needs will increase substantially over existing water usage resulting in no substantial impact in the area of sewer and water. And that statement's made because there's existing facilities and water usage. A SWIFT has been prepared in accordance with the New York State Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges. The proposed stormwater management system consists of an underground detention and infiltration system, hydrodynamic separator, cores, asphalt, drainage pipes, and catch bases. The SWIFT provides for an attenuation of peak rates of runoff water quality treatment and means and methods for erosion and sediment control. The planning board finds that the proposed stormwater improvements will mitigate current drainage conditions. Landscaping tree preservation. The plan identifies seventeen existing trees located largely along the perimeter of the site. The applicant has presented a landscaping plan, providing a landscaping buffer of approximately eighty-five trees and shrubs along each of the four property lines and in the parking areas. Landscaping shall be tall enough to block vehicle headlights from projecting onto adjoining properties. The planning board requires all applicants to maintain landscaping buffers in perpetuity as a condition of cycling. In addition, an existing tree line, an existing, a tree line exists in the required buffer of the adjoining subdivision. So the adjoining subdivision on both the west and southerly side, one on the southerly side is a thirty-foot buffer based on aerial imagery that I looked at. There are existing, there's an existing tree line. And to the westerly buffer is a fifteen-foot buffer. Again, there are some existing trees in there as well, not on the subject property. Endangered species. This, again, like many of our sites, the EAF, the mapper pulled in Northern Longyear Baff. I have included the standard recommendations, the trees. Restrictions to ground disturbance between April first and October thirty-first, and that's in accordance with the DCS common practice. Historical preservations, we did receive a shippo letter as stated by the applicant upon review of our current local law. It is not within the Monroe Historic District, nor has it been designated, nor is it listed as a designated property. Traffic, the applicant presented a traffic impact study. And again, it's more detailed, but I'm summarizing here. That was reviewed by Kimberly Horn on behalf of the Village of Monroe. The Islamic Center indicated that attendance for its Friday meeting approximately 1:00 PM was the largest reoccurring event at the center. For purposes about evaluating traffic, the attendance figures from Friday services were utilized. The center holds additional meetings or services throughout the week, but attendance is significantly lower, three to twenty people, depending on day and time. The center indicated that it holds two larger events during the year. If necessary, the central will utilize the Monroe Police Department to direct traffic during these events. And that will be a condition of their approval, but that's with any church in Christmas time or anything like that. The study identified existing traffic patterns in the area surrounding the site, calculated the traffic generation expected from the proposed mosque, and analyzed the impacts of increased traffic and identified intersections in streets. Although, and the study provides, although the modifications to the new Islamic Center are not projected to increase traffic, DTS Providence, the engineering firm that conducted it, conservatively analyzed the addition of twenty entering trips and twenty exiting trips to account for the possibility of potential future growth of the center's membership in traffic. Accounting for the increased traffic, the study concluded that the levels of service and delays at the site driveway are expected to continue to operate appropriately and with minimal delays. With respects to parking, DTS Providence observed a maximum of eighty-two vehicles parked on site during the Friday afternoon service. The site plan proposes a hundred and eleven total parking spaces. The study indicated that the site, the distance of the driveway is sufficient provided that vegetation along the west side of Orange Turnpike is cut back and maintained. And again, that was reviewed and signed up on by Andrew Connel. Lighting, two issues. The first is light emanating from light fixtures located on the site. The second is light emanating from car headlights entering the parking lot for late evening prayer. The applicant submitted a lighting plan for both, per the Village of Monroe zoning code, artificial lighting of any kind with light sources visible beyond the lot lines is prohibited. In addition, two hundred dash thirty-six requires all lighting fixtures to have reflectors with proper glass lenses, concentrating the illumination upon the site area to prevent direct glare upon the street or adjacent property. The planning board finds the proposed lighting plan does not result in a substantial impact. With respect to light emanating from vehicle headlights, the proposed project locates the parking lot toward the street and away from adjoining residents. The planning board finds the proposed landscaping, together with the parking lot location, mitigates the impact from vehicle headlights. Parking, pursuant to recent amendments of the Village of Monroe zoning code, parking areas of a community place of worship may not be located between the principal structure and the street. The applicant is seeking a variance from the zoning board of appeals on the basis that locating the parking lot in the front of the building will have fewer adverse environmental impacts compared with the alternative of locating the parking lot to the rear of the building. The proposed location avoids the need to alter existing topography with fill and grading. The applicant's engineer has indicated that a retaining wall of approximately twenty-one feet could be necessary to accommodate a rear yard parking lot. The retaining wall would be near adjoining residential properties. The limit of disturbance would be smaller with reduced development coverage as a result of not needing longer driveways to the rear. The front, the front parking lot allows the natural grading to be maintained around the neighboring properties. Lastly, eliminating the need for raised light poles, for raised light poles and wall pack lights on the proposed building, keeping the use more character with adjoining residential use. In the event the ZBA denies the request of relief, then the parking lot is required to be in the rear. This SEACR determination will need to be reevaluated.
Okay. Comments from the board?
So I do have a comment about the screening for the parking, the three to four years that's gonna take to fill that in. Would it be, would you be able to do something like this here? Instead of just going across, maybe stagger them, maybe put it a little closer?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stagger them, because in those three, three, four years is a long time-
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
-headlights coming into your property area. So maybe if you did this, that it will create a natural screen initially and then only get denser as it goes.
We're in those areas too, Ryan.
Yeah, we have done something similar in the past, and they liked it, you know. That's fine. I think that's a good idea.
Stagger them a little bit, but-
Staggering is good. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so-
I think our quote actually required something.
That stagger?
And they're somewhat staggered here, but there isn't a little bit of a Z, so you wanna make sure they're planted. Close, but not too close.
Sure.
Right.
That's fine. Yeah, sure.
Is that okay with you guys? Yeah.
We'd be happy to accommodate. No problem.
Okay. Any other comments? Does someone wanna make a motion?
I just had to work with it. So the water, just to clarify, because it's still weird that I read that. It's in the deed. The water's coming from where? From which direction?
There's an existing water easement associated with the adjoining development. There is a type-
On which property? Does it make a difference? Not make a difference?
Murphy, Capelli, Menio, whose is it?
Uh, I don't remember.
Toward Reynolds, right? It's whoever's on the Reynolds side.
Because according to those comments that I know, it says that they don't, they see nothing on the deed. I just wanted to just clarify that. They see nothing on it.
So this is, this is where I, so the way I read the comment was with respect to the walking through.
It wasn't. If we just-
I will double check the easy one, but I will-
It's right up there. If you open up this, if it's still up there, that comment, just go up.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, that's all, right? It should be...
Uh, for egress to Reynolds Road, they were parking on that road and washing down.
She was incorrectly told there was a water easement across her property. There is no easement on her deed. She researched the deeds and doesn't know why Senator Dees referenced easement and the other. I just wanted to clarify that.
I will say, because I've had litigation before in other planning boards, we are not the arbiters of title. I will double check. If they have presented the easement, I will review it again. If it's facially, if it is facially valid, like there's not something completely obvious.
So it's possible it's not on their deed, but it's there. Okay, right.
Right.
And it likely, if somebody buys after, if an easement's a fifty-year-old easement and you bought twenty years ago, it may not be on your deed because you refer to it by reference to the land records. So it's entirely, there are lots, like, if you look at your deed, everybody's got an orange rock easement, right? Or whatever utility company. It's not on the deed.
Yeah, okay.
It's done through a title.
Just wanted to clarify.
I will double check, and obviously, they would have to have, all this is predicated on good title that way.
Right.
We did go through this before because we were trying to do sewer and water in that same easement, and they were not able to show they had the right to expand to sewer.
Right. I remember that part, yeah.
But they can run water. And I also believe it's, if I recall, it's, I think it's actually the village's easement to tie into, so they're tying it to the village infrastructure.
It is maybe invalid. I don't know how that's possible. It could be invalid, but that was the question.
But if it's an easement to the village, it's easement.
Yeah, yeah.
It's village infrastructure.
Okay.
I'll confirm that. I wouldn't let that hold it up for SEACR purposes.
Yeah, sure.
Any other comments on the motion as read? So we need a motion then to approve the resolution, the neg deck?
I wanna make a motion for the negative deck.
Okay, so, number Umberto in second?
What's second?
Number Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Neg.
Neg.
Two?
I don't oppose. I mean, I oppose.
Okay, based on any-
I think we have not taken a hard look enough at this to see that the whole action won't have a negative environmental impact. As I read the ECL and the SEACR handbook, we should take the aesthetic character of the changes into account, as well as the impact on the neighborhood. I don't know of a house of worship in the Village of Monroe that will dominate its residential neighborhoods like this mosque is supposed to dominate its residential neighborhoods. The closest I can think of is Sacred Heart, but that's well in the boundaries of its property there. It's screened much more effectively than what is being proposed here. I simply don't think we've done enough of a job to say that we can declare no negative-
No impact.
No impact, yeah.
And did you have that under the ARB, what Fred just-
So the appearance of the building.
Right.
Um, Jeff, did you vote?
Uh, not yet.
I will, because of Marilyn's absence, I will need your vote.
Yeah.
I need your vote.
No, I understand. So what I wanted to know is, is that going to be, that's something that we can do under ARB?
I think a lot of the concerns addressed can be raised in subsequent site, once we get back from the zoning board of appeals through ARB and the finalization of the site plan.
Okay.
And I think small tweaks to the landscaping plan, as discussed, can be accommodated even with the neg deck. And if something, if information comes to light that's not, has not been considered, then we motion to reopen the negative declaration and reevaluate.
Right.
But it's hard to finalize that without the ZBA giving me the confirmation.
Right. Does that change anything for you, Fred?
No, no. I'm not sure that I'm comforted by Ms. Cassidy's representation that we can deal with the appearance of the building. I don't know if that means the height or just means the color, or we can demand stock or whatever, but I don't think it goes to-
Well, if the heights encode.
If the heights encode, I think under the ECL, we still have the ability to say, aesthetically, in terms of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, we don't agree with it. I think that's within our discretion. And I think before we run off and hastily group something or not, we oughta get out there and see.
Would you say that's within our discretion, Elizabeth?
What? But to, with respect to the height?
Yeah.
If it meets code?
Yeah.
I believe you can address the appearance of the height, but not the height.
See? So that's, you disagree with that, Fred?
That's, that's why I'm saying it would be an ARB issue. So there are ways you can minimize the height, paint color, things like that, but if it meets height-
It meets the code on the height.
Correct.
Do you disagree with that?
Yes, yeah, I do, yeah.
And same reasons? Same reasons?
Yeah, same reason.
So I'm gonna vote yes to approve, 'cause I don't think we can on the code. I don't, I don't think we can do that.
So I just want the record to reflect a vote of four in favor of granting the negative deck, two opposed to granting the negative declaration, and one absent. As a seven number, as a seven number, we have a majority.
Yep, motion passes. Okay.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night. Next up, Forty-four Highland. Everybody else has five minutes each. So before you even speak, Dave?
No, I think you're right. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I think on this application, last time we were together, there was a bulk table issue. And has that been resolved to your satisfaction?
Uh, yes. Let me just read through the comment that I had on the plan. This is for Forty-four Highland, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the bulk table has been revised to include the floor area ratio as required for single-family dwellings based on section two hundred dash twenty-four point one. As noted, the proposed floor area consists of one thousand four hundred square feet for the first floor and one hundred and twenty square feet in the attic. The plan notes that the basement will be unfinished. The proposed FAR with these square footages equals twenty-six point nine-nine percent, which meets the maximum FAR of zero point two seven noted in the village code. It is recommended that the plan include a notation that the basement shall not be finished in the future, nor should the finished square footage of the attic be increased above one hundred and twenty square feet without review and approval by the Village of Monroe Planning Board. It is also recommended that this limitation be noted as a condition of site plan approval.
Okay. Elizabeth?
So this is where I point to him because it was mostly technical comments. I had in preparation for the last board meeting, prepped a conditional resolution. I certainly, my understanding was that was a concern with the, based on what Mr. Higgins just read, I think all of those can be addressed with conditions and approval at the end. So I would add that resolution, add that, his memo, satisfaction of that as a condition. So this is a type-two action pursuant to SEACR. I don't know if Mr. Higgin had read the resolution before, but-
Uh, we did, because we knew it wasn't gonna be considered.
So this follows my customary, my customary track. I'll read this unless the board has other questions.
Are there, are there other questions from the board on this particular? No?
And again, I will tweak when I get home this evening, and I'll, or tomorrow morning, I will send this in to you. Whereas the Village of Monroe Planning Board is in receipt of an application for site plan approval pursuant to section two hundred dash sixty-eight D one, whereas the planning board is receiving and considering the following application signed April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, short-form environmental assessment form dated April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, plot plan prepared by CivTech Engineering and Surveying dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. I will fill in the revised date, comments of the Village Building Inspector, Village Engineer, and Planning Board Attorney. Whereas the planning board has determined that this is a type-two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and no further environmental review is required. And whereas the application does not require a public hearing, and the planning board has elected not to hold a public hearing. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board grants the proposed, oh, this is, I have a type of, site plan subject to the following conditions. Applicant to address the comments set forth in the memos of David Higgins, P.E. of Lincoln Teleengineering dated May ninth, twenty twenty-four, and I'll add the most recent memo, my memo dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I don't think there are any other conditions. Chairman shall be authorized to sign the flat upon confirmation from the Village Engineer and Planning Board Attorney that all outstanding conditions have been satisfied. Applicant to pay all fees and applicant to obtain all permits.
Okay. Any questions as the- Any questions as the, on the resolution read into the record? From anyone? We need a motion then to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Number Kelly, in the second?
I'll second it.
Number Iannucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Terry, I'll start to leave that to you. I'll email, I have to edit and I'll.
So I think our next application is Somni Restaurant. Luis Nala, so we are here on this one for a field change, basically. And I'm just gonna look to Dave to say, I know, I think the board is aware, but there was a stop work order put on by our building inspector because what they were doing didn't match the plan that was approved by the board. That has been since rectified, so we're looking at it as a field change because it was a mistake by the architect in what they did. So, Dave, you're satisfied now?
Yes, I spoke with John O'Rourke, who actually reviewed it, having his past, you know, history with the project and his knowledge of it. Basically, he reviewed it and said he had no comments, no issues with it, and, you know, O'Rourke was so inclined, they could approve it.
And I just want to make sure what was submitted addresses Jim's concerns.
Yeah. No, this is, Somni.
No, I know, but the house that's in front of it, there's a house directly behind that with the space. With the dumpster being located, there's a dwelling directly behind it. I don't think anybody's actually looked at that. The other concern was, I believe what you were gonna talk about is the agreement with the town, that you have that? Gonna cover the area that they're talking about? Agreement with the town, that's the only, make sure that it covers those areas that have, the O'Rourke dumpster that they're located on. Luis, you are moving that forward, like we're talking about. Where did you put the footings in? Too close to the property line? They're moving that up forward.
So the board knows what I'm doing, because I'm actually going into the land records to make sure I have the original version that was actually recorded on the Orange County land records.
That's the one that was approved, right? That's the one John said, I mean, that was approved.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is one space wide.
Right.
Versus two spaces wide.
Right, and that's twenty foot, six inches in wide by four foot and a half inches, that's like?
Yeah.
Basically, they're just expanding it.
Expanding it, so they need to go file an amended.
That's what they're seeking.
But this has to, this is the license agreement with the town of Monroe, because that's the town's parking lot.
He didn't mention anything, but, okay.
You wanna see what I'm, here, come on up so you can see what I'm looking at? So, this is your license agreement that you have with the town? Okay. If you, if you look at the dumpster location depiction, right? That's what's shown, okay, so it's showing only the one, the one space. So if we approve that plan, the town's gonna have to just, and it doesn't have to be a whole new agreement, they just have to file a correction agreement with the revised picture. Okay?
But I think the two parking spaces, I think, in the easement, if you use the two parking spaces.
I know, would.
Does that have to then?
I can talk to the town attorney and whether though this can follow, but that's the discrepancy. Is, that's what's shown in the one space, is shown in the record, because this is the land records. Okay, this isn't just, in name with an old version, this is what's recorded, is that. They do describe, you are correct, the easement does describe two spaces. Somehow, the wrong image got attached to the document, that's the problem.
Okay, so I have to.
Just say you want a correction and to correct the, see, because it says, the premise, so the licensed premises, the premises located eleven state road Monroe, New York, consisting of approximately two existing apartment spaces. The picture only shows one. So, there's a discrepancy. For our purposes, we can go ahead and grant the field change subjects to that getting corrected.
And would I have to have to get that corrected?
They, and I can reach out to Brian Nugent, they would file an amended, they would file a corrected license. It's the same document, they just filed a corrected license.
Okay. So we're good then?
I wanted to show you that, okay? All right.
So Liz, do you wanna, I mean, we can make a motion just to approve the field change, is that all we have to do?
Subject, subject to confirmation of the license agreement.
Okay. So, let's make it that, so, for Somni, so we're gonna look to approve a field change on the plan submitted contingent upon, what was it, the?
License agreement.
License agreement.
By the town.
Being corrected, corrected.
Corrected. Okay, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Number Kelly?
Second.
And number Umberto, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
I'll reach out to Mr. Nugent in the morning with a copy. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, it has to get recorded. Well, no.
To be recorded in the county.
If, Goshen is to report, if he went in person, he would go to Goshen. You can also, your attorney or title company should be able to electronically report it. All right.
That'd be better.
Talk to your, talk to your attorney.
All right. Okay. I believe next is Ramapo Street. Right, I don't think, or is it?
Elm Street.
Elm Street?
Elm Street.
It's Ramapo Street.
One, my eyes went right over it. What can I tell you?
You're both wearing purple too.
He had those glasses.
And they don't have.
They're new too. It's the only, what I wanna say, you know?
Speaking of which, I'm gonna put mine up. Good evening, everybody, for the record, my name's Michael Morgante, I'm the engineer that's representing this application. And since we were last here, we had received a comment letter from both consultants, building inspector. We had received comments from the board. We addressed the majority of those comments, we had gotten updated survey. We've submitted it, we did receive more recent comments from Mr. Higgins, which we take no exception to. We'd be glad to make those revisions. One of the things that I would like to discuss in particular tonight would be maybe some of the landscaping concerns. It's not that we've been avoiding preparing a landscaping plan or ignoring Mr. Higgins' comments, it's just that the site's kinda very overcrowded and tight as it is, there's not much room. What we had proposed was a six-foot tall fence with privacy slats to give screening, at least of the parking area from the neighboring properties. But if you look at the property especially, I don't know if you have the plan, you can bring it up. Because I need a North Arrow, but on a plan, it'd be the front right corner, the right-hand side of the property, there's a lot of existing utilities there. There's telephone cables, there's underground electric.
It just disappeared.
Servicers, horrible.
What is that, what is that? Yeah, I'm having problems on mine too.
Yeah, go back out, back in. It's better. Try moving down a page, maybe you get lucky. I've never seen that before.
She's got the blank middle of the document, and then the sides are all blank. So it's not like a full screen.
Try it this way and see.
Could, would you potentially, you could, you could also download it and maybe double-click on it, see if it pops up that way.
Yeah, try that. Yeah, just sit down there, yeah, just down there.
Get it open finally, see what happens. There you go. If you need a part-time IT guy, I'm available. I think you guys might already have. So if you can just scroll down to the second sheet, probably a little easier to see actually on the existing conditions plan, just because it's a little less busy, but.
You have a lot of just existing utilities, and there's just not a lot of room, and it's sort of like the whole potential area. It's really ballsy for us to consider screening for a residential neighborhood, which is one of the reasons why you chose the option to kind of fence it in the area with privacy slats, and at least to provide screening.
What are you talking about, like, screening for what now?
Uh, for.
Residential, right there.
Yeah, the residential district is right to the right of us.
Commercial versus residential buffer requirement.
Right. Yes, okay.
And in terms of landscaping requirements, I mean, the majority of the site's paved. I mean, what we would like to discuss with the board is potentially locating planters around the exterior of the buildings that we could place landscaping in, we could build boxes to try to create landscaping areas. But other than that, I don't know that we'll be ever able to maintain like the super full intent of the code. I mean, the site is pre-existing and very difficult to work with.
Well, I would say that you need a rendering for us, because trying to imagine it, nobody's gonna be able to imagine it. So, anybody that comes in, we have them do a landscape.
And we would be glad to do that, yeah, but I mean, in terms of an approach, I think that's more or less what we were talking about, or looking to discuss tonight. We would be glad to prepare some type of a rendering and show.
You're talking like a stockade fence?
Um, I'm talking about basically a chain-linked fence with privacy slats that go through it. If you'd like to see a stockade fence, if you'd see, like, something more aesthetically pleasing, we could certainly do that as well. At least along, at least along, at least, I think at least along the property line that borders, the Heritage Trail would probably be appropriate. And then probably up along the line where the residential neighborhood is, we could look at certainly doing that.
Well, so along the Heritage Trail, you're saying you can't plant, is what you're saying?
Uh, if you take, if you take.
Between the Heritage Trail and you, you have no place to plant?
It's all paved.
Right up to the end of your property?
Correct. I mean, if we had a foot or two in some areas, that would be a lot.
Well, I mean, you gotta put something up, that's for sure.
Yeah, we will. We'll, we'd be glad to work with the board and get creative in any way we can to try to establish that. But they do need that pavement for operations around the site, so I can't remove it and put plantings in its place. I'd have to take out a five-to-ten-foot strip just to make sure I protect the plantings alone, if that was the direction we chose. So, again, we'd be more interested in looking at placing like planter boxes around the site that we could probably utilize, like in front of the building, in areas that would make more sense. We could certainly look at a more stockade-type fence, a vinyl kind of fence. We could look at a chain-linked fence with privacy slats, whatever the board is interested in taking a look at, we could certainly consider that for screening purposes. But for landscape purposes, we're very limited on what we have available on the site.
So how can you do a fence but not?
Because the fence can be constructed into the pavement on the property line. Yeah.
Right, but if you, if you just said that you need the pavement, you're gonna lose the pavement anyway.
No, I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose maybe one foot if I set the fence one foot inside the pavement line, but that's a lot different than losing five or ten feet to landscaping.
Yeah.
Right. Correct. Talking, talking about a fence that's maybe at best six inches wide. If it's a chain-linked fence, it's not, it's three or four inches wide.
I mean, I don't think we'd wanna see a chain link, that's my opinion.
Yeah, those slats get.
Right, they just get.
File up against them and they're.
We can certainly look at something more decorative. We could certainly do like a staggered, like, you know, kinda like wooden-type fence. We could look at a stockade vinyl fence, we can certainly look at different options for the fencing, that's for sure.
Comments from the board? I feel seen a lot, like, you know?
I'd like to see something more subtle, including sort of chain link.
Yeah.
No, we'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, I think chain link's out.
That's fine, that's fine. We could certainly look at an alternate fence type. And in, as it relates to landscaping, like, we'll, we'll take the lead on that, we'll, we'll prepare something. If we have to provide renderings, we'll look at that also. At the very least, what I'll do is give you what I know the Village of Monroe standard is, which is essentially to give you a planting list, it's got pictures next to it.
Yes.
And then we'll take.
Yeah, you've seen that.
I've done, I've done that before, yeah, so. So, and we'll take a look at what we can do to make a visual appearance for you guys to take a look at it.
Yeah, that'd be good, in the meantime, some of us are definitely gonna get over there and just take a look.
Sure, that's fine. We, as it relates to Mr. Higgins' letter here, number two, we're in agreement with that, we must have missed that. I think Jim had also noted that on his comment letter, that the setback between the closest portion of the building and, yeah, yeah, it should be zero, so we'll modify the bulk table to reflect that. I guess one of the biggest things for us tonight to discuss is potentially, we have a little bit of a ways to go still with the Planning Board in terms of landscaping and whatnot to get final site plan approval, but we do feel that the plans are in a good position right now for the board to potentially consider referring this particular project to the ZBA because a majority of what we're looking at doing, again, also with this project tonight, is ZBA-related. We've got some serious variances we're looking for, and we feel that the plans are in a position that the board could consider that referral tonight.
Elizabeth, what do you think?
And I apologize, the joys of me being, being away, I'm not as on top of the site usually. With respects to procedure, the question, we have not made any secret, I will review them in a minute, we've not made any secret declarations.
Declaration?
So, you need to go to. So you need to go to the ZBA for...
You're in the same boat, Jessica. You're in the same boat as, as what we were...
Yeah, so the question is, if we do a coordinated review, we can certainly declare intent to be, intent to be lead agency with coordinated review. We have ZBA, Orange County's involved as well.
Yeah, because of the rail trail.
So, and then we can, we certainly can send it, do you think it's harmful on for 239?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
So what I would, and I don't have a resolution drafted, but certainly it's a, it's a standard procedural resolution. We would make a motion to declare our intent to be lead agency. I believe this is an unlisted action. We can then circulate, we can circulate that notice to the ZBA. We can have, we can send them to the ZBA to start the process. You know, they, they can't finish the process.
Right.
Just like the Islamic Senate, that was before you were there tonight. So we can do that to get the ball rolling procedurally.
Anybody have any comment or objection or...
David, as far as all the comments, he says that he's in agreement with them, but have you seen the site plan completely finished yet?
No, there's, I mean, there's still changes to be made to the site plan. I think some had to do with the ADA access.
Correct.
There was a question about the lease area, because I noticed it includes the parking lot.
Right.
Did include the entrance area to the parking lot.
Right, we'll, we'll work with the, yeah, we may include that as well. That was a good comment.
Yes, I mean, so the number of things to go through, you don't have any issues with addressing?
No, and I don't think they actually impact the final design of the, of the site plan. Like, in other words, what the ZBA will see will certainly not change when I come back and make those changes and provide them to the board and Mr. Higgins for his review, which is why I'm making the request.
And, and I think it's far enough along to do what we have suggested, so that we can get that ball rolling. And then as we go through the process, he can, we can be working on those changes. Obviously, we're not going to be issuing, and they, immediately, he's got, he's got to go through that and go through the dev analysis in order to get that. So I would start tonight, and it's, it would be appropriate to declare your intent to be lead agency. And further declare that this is an unlisted action. ZBA, Orange County, anybody else I'm missing? You're already connected, so we don't need any super water or anything like that. All right, are involved agencies.
Right.
And if you, if you'd be so kind, other people come in and say, yes, we agree, we agree, we agree. Next meeting, it's not on the site plan. Or we have to go find it on the site plan.
Sure.
And it only adds more hours for us through David. Do us a favor, question and answer format.
I, I provide written response letters with my plans that are submitted. Yes, yes, a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, other people come up here and you say, yes, I agree, and it never happens.
I, I, it's my standard practice in my business that I provide response letters to comments and to help guide the board and their consultants to understand what the changes were that were made.
Thank you.
And I'll review them either way. Whether given the guide map as to what's been changed or not, I'll go through what they should do.
It doesn't get me out of any trouble.
Understood.
So we need a motion to...
Declare leading.
Alert intent.
Intent, not declare.
Declare, right, intent.
Intent to be lead agency.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Kelly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
And I'll prep a notice to be circulated. Who made the second, I'm sorry?
Kelly. And do we need to refer them to the ZBA?
We, we can. So what you can do is a motion to refer to the ZBA, subject to seeker. So if I can have that motion.
Okay, so we make that motion?
We'll make the motion.
Okay, number Hefnecker?
Second.
And number Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes.
And then if I may have a motion for 239, please, authorizing Terry to send for 239.
Okay, so we have a motion, need a motion for a 239 review? And number Kelly? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. That was easy.
That was. I'm gonna leave now.
The later you come, the later you come up on the agenda, the faster things happen.
I've learned how to get through the Village of Monroe Planning Board, yes. But seriously, you all have a good night and we'll see you soon.
David's over there really hyping up, this is true. All right. All right, David, you're it. All right, so let's see, this one, oh, it's ramiposting. Oh, gosh. Okay, so let me just ask Dave, Dave, where, where are you at with that?
So we, we reviewed the plans that were submitted. We did have a number of comments. I don't know, Dave, you got a copy of it there yet?
Yeah, I think. Secretary for emailing it to us today, really appreciate it.
Okay, so it may, it may make sense to go through these.
Yes.
Okay. Number one, additional landscaping has been provided along the north side of the proposed parking lot. Planning board should review the advocacy of the proposed landscaping. I mean, if you want it to continue, you can come back to any of these.
Yeah, just read them right through, that's fine.
Okay, and number two, details for the proposed retaining wall have been provided as the wall extends, I'm sorry, as the wall exceeds three feet in height, the design for the wall must be provided by a licensed professional engineer and approved by the building department. Number three, a floodplain development permit is required per section 107-12 of the village code. Applicants designed professionals shall provide the required information for the permit. For example, identification of flood elevations, floor elevation, certificate of compliance for floodproofing, evaluation of potential damage to other properties, et cetera. Number four, the designer has provided a plan showing the constrained lands in accordance with local law number four. Based upon the mapping provided and the calculation shown on sheet C-2.1 of the site plan, the lot appears to meet the required minimum lot area after the constrained lands have been accounted for. Per section 4. D of the local law, during site plan subdivision, special use permit, application review, the planning board shall require that development areas be located so as to avoid these constrained lands from disturbance. To the maximum extent, development shall not be sighted on nor shall development disturb areas constrained as set forth above, unless waived by the planning board due to the unique nature of the parcel and that such exclusion would render the parcel undevelopable. Planning board as condition of approval may require the imposition of map notes to ensure that these requirements and any conditions limiting development are met. Number five, the plan proposes a total land disturbance of 42,920 square feet, which is 0.98 plus or minus acres. Section 168-12. A of the village code requires that any land development activity requires a stormwater pollution prevention plan prepared according to the specifications of the code in article 1 of chapter 168. Land development activities as defined in the code include any development projects which include placement of fill that disturbs more than half an acre of total land area. Per section 168-12. D 2, land development, development activities disturbing between a half an acre and one acre of land during the course of a project exclusive of single-family residences and construction activities at agricultural properties shall include water quality and quantity controls, post-construction stormwater runoff controls as set forth in 168-12. D 3, which further requires that the SWIP be prepared by a licensed landscape architect, certified professional or professional engineer who shall certify that the design of all stormwater management facilities meet the requirements of this article and article 1 of chapter 168. Number six, a revised traffic analysis has been provided by the applicant and is subject to review and comment by the village's traffic consultant. The applicant has submitted plans to the New York State Department of Transportation. The applicant will need to obtain a highway entrance permit from the New York State Department. Number seven, the designer should confer with the village building inspector regarding the occupancy loading for the building to determine if the direction of the door swing needs to be in the direction of egress, as it may affect the sufficiency of the width of the lot we've shown and ADA accessibility. Number eight, as my understanding of the property is now located within the historic district and is subject to the landmarks preservation law, all review will now be subject to this entire new section of local law. Planning board should review application for performance of article 19 of the village code, Historic Preservation Commission, Landmarks, Historic Districts.
Big list.
Lot of homework.
No, actually, I, I, I'm ready to address. You know, on a good note, the, you know, the project, as you've seen it for the last few years, really hasn't changed. The building's been in its location for quite a few years. The parking, the opening, the driveway opening, which has now been acknowledged by DOT, which is on the verge of approval. So I think a lot of these comments are easily addressed. And I, you know, I'm hoping that we can move a little forward with the approval process, maybe with a public hearing, to just keep the project moving, start getting public comments back. The, we provided a lot of landscaping on the north wall, on the north side of the property. Beyond that, it's all forest. It's not really looking onto anything else. The retaining wall will get a licensed engineer to sign off on the design. The floodplain development permit is part of the building permit process, right? So it would, to my understanding, be a condition of your final resolution. So that's addressed, number three. Number four, you know, we did a lot of work with that, thank you, Dave for acknowledging it, the lot complies. The, the one comment that has the work is number five. So that's something new that came up, and that's a SWIP, and we're talking about a study or report.
So the village code requires, and this is somewhat different than the New York State D E C code, because the threshold to the New York State D E C is one acre, but the village has the specification limitations only half an acre. So the requirement is that the applicant provide, the applicant's professional provides a stormwater pollution prevention plan that has both water quality and quantity control. So you have to show no net increase in the rain runoff, so that's attenuation, detention usually of, of stormwater. And also that you meet the water quality requirements of the New York State D E C.
So, and, you know, I understand, we agree. I mean, basically, in concept, we're going to collect the water on the ground, purify it before it goes out into the ground. It's really not going to have anything visible on site. So, you know, we'll do the calc's, we'll do the report, submit it. It's a root, now, I don't want to say routine, but it's something that can be done and addressed. It doesn't really affect the outside physical aspects of the project. The traffic analysis is being done. I could go over the occupant load of the building with Jim. It's a commercial load, you know, it's one very 200 square feet. And that would be part of the building permit process?
Yeah, but he's worried about the doors.
I'll, I'll confirm the occupant load in 2020 to get the threshold, so I'm almost sure. Yeah, okay. So we're really, we're kind of there. And, you know, I was hoping, I, I believe, I could be wrong. I know the project gets delayed because of fees and things like that. So I think we're at the point where if it's agreeable with the board, if they can entertain the next step of public hearing while we're just addressing comment number six. I think we'd want to have a stormwater talk, that would be great.
Don't you think it'd be advisable to at least get the stormwater underway or get a handle on that before you set a public hearing? I mean, if I were a member of the public, that would be a very consider...
I'd like to have, I certainly would like to have that report.
Definitely.
And before, and I did review the minutes, there was a question about the secret, the secret process that we had, we had started. We had declared lead agency, then we had declared, declared lead agency as opposed to intent. And I defer to Dave to as well, this needs DOT and Army Corps. So we should revise that, to correct that, which we can do this evening, is to declare intent to be lead agency to correct that error with Army Corps, New York State DOT as involved agencies. And then as well as, it's also subject to 239. So we can certainly revise that resolution to declare our intent to be lead agency. My understanding, stuff has been referred to D E C.
Yeah, there, as, as Dave acknowledged in his report, we already submitted. Actually, they got back to us to do our perm application, perm, the permitting to actually start that so we can have that in place for the contractor to begin once the project's approved. So that's insinuating a pretty broad acceptance of the project and...
It might imply that, but we're not going to make any decisions on references.
So the timeline I would suggest is declare intent. We have a 30-day circulation. I'll get Terry the notices tomorrow. They'll circulate if the submission, if an updated submission is in on time. We would then be in a position for our July meeting to set a public, to declare lead, to be, be unlead, to set a public hearing. If, assuming things are in.
Again, just, just as a statement, we're asking for the flood damage protection plan. We asked for that March 11th, and it's been ignored.
Well, no, it hasn't been ignored. It's part of the building permit process.
Did you do it?
It's part of the building permit process.
Well, there's two different things. There's the flood prevention permit.
Are you talking about a flood permit or are you talking about a SWIP?
Yeah, I think you're talking about the SWIP.
Talking about flooding calculations in the study.
That's the SWIP, yeah.
I put the comments just...
It's all part of it.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, I put the comments...
Ask for the same thing.
I put the comment regarding the floodplain disturbance permit in the, in the letter. It's true, it's not been addressed, but that, that is something that can be done just prior to the, you know, the building permit or as part of the building permit. I believe that's what the village code calls for. But I put it in there to make sure that it's not forgotten about and also that it's made in conditions of the approval that the board had. I will say that with regards to the stormwater pollution prevention plan, that, you know, being someone that actually does prepare these for other projects and other municipalities, where we, where we do this kind of work, they're not always that simple to do.
No, no, it's, it appears...
And you have a lot of constraints on the site. There's floodplains, there's wetlands, there's limitations on, on what we're doing. So, I mean, I know, I can speak for myself, if the board were to ask me, I would say I wouldn't want to see that report before I was, I was to give an indication that I felt like that the site was, you know, not going to substantially change as a result of that work being done.
Correct. And, and, you know, in agreement with Dave, I mean, it will, we won't have that in two weeks, the next submission. You know, it, it, it takes about a month, five weeks to really get that type of study done. So how does that, so, no, I'm, I'm ceding to Elizabeth. How would that affect the timeline that you just outlined for declaring these...
Well, if we declare tonight, we'll circulate so that it would be ready for, we'll be ready in 30 days. And then whenever you, whenever you and your client are ready, then we'll be ready to, we'll be ready to pick it up. I don't, I don't see the secret processes as, as holding this up. I think there's, there's...
No, but I don't think we're far enough in the, in the process right now, David, to do the public hearings.
My other question, and again, I was not here for the last meeting, I was, I was away, but I did review my notes. When we had last discussed, what's the status, where are we with Army Corps?
We submitted, that's why we submitted the letter from Pete Torgerson, representing the Army Corps, because we can't get any documentation from them. So we asked Pete to reach out, he submitted that letter outlining the status of the project.
My, my concern with, again, my concern with Army Corps is we have a letter from Army Corps that says, this is the plan that's approved, and that was from ages ago. Right, a different, a different plan set. We've modified the plan. Now we even have a different owner. And we can't get anything out of Army Corps to say this, this is, that that mitigation inherently can, can now be applied and we're relying on, on an approval that by the face of the Army Corps letter says, this is for the plans that were submitted and the plans that are in front of us didn't exist when that was submitted. So that's my concern with, with the Army Corps. And Dave, maybe I'm missing something from Army Corps procedure, but...
Yes, I mean, I, I did review the letter that came in from Mr. Torgerson. I mean, just, you have, have seen it or have not seen it?
I've seen the letter, but that's the, and I respect Mr. Torgerson, he's well-known. And if he, if he were to give me a birds and bees study or a wetland examination, I would take it. But that's, this is kind of a, take my word for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand the concern, I think... I think, is there any way that you can get even an email from Brian Orzell, something that says we agree with the, you know, with what's in the letter from Mr. Torgerson? That he's saying simply that the site has obtained approval, it may proceed as it was originally submitted to Army Corps of Engineers. But the other part about that also, though, is because of the village requirement for SWIP, there's going to be probably a lot of changes that are going to happen on this plan. Right, you may wind up disturbing, you know, if you want to have a parking lot in the building as it's currently proposed, you may wind up needing to disturb more of the site for stormwater management.
Yeah, I can't debate that, you know, we have to go through that process. The only thing I can remind the board, I thought it was John O'Rourke who weighed in on this, you know, prior, you know, to Dave. The Army Corps is not, again, not concerned about the type of project. They're concerned about the fill and the mitigation. The mitigation that was, the wetlands, that was creating harem and and the comparable mitigation that's done here on Ramapo Street.
That may be the, my concern is, the letter on its face is limiting in its nature, that it's on its face, it said, as per the plans submitted.
Right.
And that was from 29, that was from five years ago.
Right.
And the plans have been, the plans are different, they've been modified.
The owner's different, yeah.
And the fact that, and I get it, Army Corps may not care, but I need at least something from a representative of Army Corps saying that they don't necessarily care, or that this is acceptable.
And I think, David, that would be maybe easy to get from them, because if it is all they want...
We reached out. I think Dave would agree with me, they're not quick in putting out correspondence, you know, I mean, you know...
Yeah, I mean, they're hard to get in touch with, I will agree with that. But, I mean, like I said, with the preparation of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, I think that the plan is going to change, and perhaps significantly.
Maybe the weight of the village reaching out might help. In the 239 referral, you're declaring yourselves lead agency, you're going to send notice to Army Corps?
Army Corps.
Yeah, okay, so maybe, I mean, we did, you know, to put before the board, we did reach out. You know, we sent the whole application. I think we included the email in one of our submissions, you know, as record of it. We have not received a response back. So, I mean, it's not, that we're not trying. So maybe now with your declaring yourselves lead, you send it to them, maybe they'll respond. And, you know, that's the best I can hope for right now. I don't have any other recourse.
You've tried more than once to reach them?
Yeah, we called, we emailed, we sent the plans. That was why we reached out to, you know, Pete, because he's one of the local reps that has a rapport with the Army Corps. And, you know, he's acknowledged by now, that's why I'm saying, so we'll give it our try.
We can declare lead agency, you know...
So just to, if I can have a resolution, declare intent to be lead agency, it's an unlisted action, the involved agencies are Army Corps of Engineers. We're going to include a notice D E C, because we are right on the threshold of the speedies permit, because we're at .98 acres, that with stormwater turns into an acre, not much.
Might as well put them in there, right.
We're going to notice them anyway. DOT for traffic.
Right.
And Orange County planning.
We have a contact at DOT, do you have that?
It would go to their general, it will go to their...
Because we have a project manager assigned to it, all right.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Member Kelly?
One second.
Member Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
And Terry, I'll get you the notice to circulate.
So our notice goes to the Army Corps of Engineer?
Our notice goes to the agencies.
To all the agencies.
To the lead agent.
It goes to those agencies, yes.
Goes to the agency.
They have 30 days to object to us serving as lead agency. They won't object.
They won't object.
But they have 30 days.
But the point is, again, he's the engineer, who's the developer?
Listed client.
Who's your client?
The, it just changed recently.
Maybe that's what's confusing, maybe that's what's confusing the Army Corps of Engineers, they don't know who you are.
Well, you know, you did hear an independent comment.
No, no, I don't care what David said, I'm talking to you.
I care what you said.
You laugh, you laugh all you want.
No, I'm not, because I gave you an honest, direct answer, and that's the truth. And if you can't handle it, if you can't hear it...
I think your developers should go down to Washington and find out what's wrong.
Well, you're out of line.
I don't think so, it's a developer's risk.
We differ in opinions, so we can remain that way.
Well, we agree to disagree.
Everybody...
It's a developer's risk.
Okay.
This project looks dead.
Mr. Mayor, do you see the abuse I'm coming through here? I'd like him removed from the board, he abused my other person in the office, and he's doing so right now.
David!
That's what I want. You own my project.
All right, David, you sat on this board.
Okay, good night.
You sat on this board, David.
All right, next up, we have the Gray Barn, and this is an informal, an informal meeting. Carol is coming through her acquaintance.
Jeff, you did not shut him up?
I didn't shut either one of you up.
Are you kidding me?
Shut him up, why? Are you ready, Carol?
I think so.
Did you get enough of the planning board?
Well, it's very, very interesting, it's all right.
That's one word for it. So, anyway, the old Lorraine Farms is the new Gray Barn. And so Carol's got a lot of plans that she would like to do, so she's here for an informal to kind of get some input. So, it's all you.
I don't even know where to start. So, we've never done anything like this before. Jim has been very helpful, he told us that we have to come to you for a lot of things. We wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what we had to bring to you to start the process, because we're hoping that it will be a shorter process, and hopefully we'll be the last in every meeting, so you just say yes. So we'd like to put in a restaurant, a full service restaurant, and liquor license. We had the, there is permission to do the deli.
Previously there, right?
Yeah, but it's a six-month business, the nursery business, so it dies off for July and August and the winter. So we need to have something to diversify, to bring money in those other six months. So we'd like to put in a liquor license, and we'd like to be able to do music. And that's where we need to go to. So right now, we're trying to just take back a piece of it at a time and clean up the whole property. The company will still have their stuff on the property, but they're hopefully moving that out.
You're renting the property, or you...
We have a lease to purchase.
You have a lease to purchase, not quite the record owners yet, I guess?
No, just...
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah, so we're, yeah, and that's what has us in a little bit of a catch-22, because there's an open permit that's 34 years old, that he's saying is all done, doesn't need anymore, and we're told that he does, so we have to get through that too.
So just if I may, with respect to the lease to purchase, depending on where you are in that transaction, you can, whatever you apply, if you're still in the lease portion, you have the current owner sign off, authorizing you as less, either as lessy or contract with the, one of the way, either way. So you can seek the approval either as a tenant or as an owner, depending on where you are in that transaction, so long as we have their sign off.
Okay, so the documents that was online that we printed out that said the owner had to fill in that, we had him fill those in and have them, is that all we need to do for that?
Yes, so long as all the owner, and I'll go through it, when they first come in to me, I'll go through it, then you're missing pieces, I'll let you know what pieces you're missing, and then I can fill those pieces in.
Thank you. Okay. So then, to get permission to do the restaurant and apply for liquor license and all that, what do I need to do for you guys?
So the first part is whatever you're planning on doing. You're going to let Jim know, you're going to pay this, it's Jim.
I already did a language...
Oh, you did an L D A.
I did a very thorough language development. So if she really needs to engage an architect or an engineer, an engineer preferred, that's going to lay over the process, but it's a special use permit.
Okay.
And they already have a site plan, this will be an amended site plan with the addition of a restaurant, that probably outdoor music and whatever else.
And that's mostly all existing use, right, Jim?
No, so they have a delta, that's what they have, that's what they're approved for.
Previously, okay, okay.
So it's a, what do you call it, agricultural with the use of the delta.
And I agree with Jim, find a good engineer to move it forward and who's familiar with the code, because a good engineer will keep the project together and manage that project. And do you guys have a list of recommendations?
We do not, because we're not supposed to give out recommendations in case you don't like them. We generally don't, what I would suggest is, if you go back through the minutes, you can kind of see who is here before the board.
Get the ones that are here regularly, very regularly with the same project and stay away.
Okay, sounds good. I would, and I do, you probably need to mention, you definitely want to mention here, because you definitely want to mention here.
How long ago was that site plan, the original site plan done?
It was amended, I'm going to say 2010, I think? Remember who did it, the original?
I think whoever did it used to be where CB Associates are now.
Was it Larry Tarrell?
I don't know, I haven't seen the map, but, I mean, a lot of times it's helpful to try to use the same consultant that did the original plan, because they may already have the survey done, they already have some of the drawing done, you know.
If they have the baseline, then I think they are, no wonder.
Cheryl's room?
That's the surveyor, oh no.
Not around, right?
This is still being drawn?
Ah. D E C engineer, they're at a survey, right? Who was that?
2000, it is 2010.
2010, right?
Yeah. I'm not sure if they're still around, right?
They have some offices. Lorraine Farms, Dorde, run the restaurant there, around 2010.
Do you understand that the site plan?
So this document is a site plan. Right, this is generally a site plan, together with the resolution approving it. You'll see notes that concern restrictions, right? You'll see here that they got a variance, you know, back in the 80s. Right, so this is what the site can look like. You are going to amend the site, some of which is because you're changing uses. So the change from, for instance, a deli to a restaurant, may alter the parking calculations. So those uses and location, so it's not just, okay, we're, you know, it may not be, you may say, well, I'm not touching any of the exterior of the buildings, but you're changing the uses, that alters parking requirements, stormwater requirements, sewage and water calculations, depending on... Oh, they are a floodplain. So if you're in a flood zone, really have it, versus an architect, or, you know, you're going to want to mention it. Because they're going to want it, they're going to have the ability to do that, whereas an architect can design you a very lovely building, but doesn't necessarily get into the weeds of the...
It is not going to need to change.
Yeah, and the reason we're asking if these are still around...
Yeah, so there's going to be a lot of...
So Jason and our... They used to believe work on KC.
Oh.
Yeah, he's Florida's, I'm sure. That floor's water.
Now, I don't know, but you probably know maybe who, if they sold the business, who has those files.
Hold on, if you give me 30 seconds, I can pull this one over.
Did you figure out who it was there, Dave?
It says KC Engineering. They had an office in, I thought it was in Circul, but it used to be years before that, it was Houston-Scarwoods.
Okay.
And they got Houston-Scarwoods.
Yeah.
Artoli and John Lang used to work for Houston-Scarwoods 40 years ago.
Okay.
They left out of there. KC Engineering bought out Houston-Scarwoods, and Jason Pittagaro, his partner, worked for KC. They left a few years ago forming their own company. They might actually have taken the files, they might have access to the information.
And that's his email.
Who might have the access to it?
You can...
Yeah, tell him, when you email him, tell him Dave Higgins says, check with you. Well, Dave Higgins said, check with you.
And as much as I can't recommend or refer another consultant, so much like the board can really, it may be helpful to find out if they had the files or who did, because then you're not repaying to have a new survey done, you're not paying to have a whole new map prepared.
The base layer they have.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so then from, so the engineer, we bring him in, we show him what we'd like to do, he does the plans, and that's what we send it to you?
Together with the application.
Okay.
Make sure you do a little copy of that, I think it's one by David.
Yeah, because that'll have all the citations that Jim is referring to in his determination.
Okay. And then, how do I get around the existing 34-year-old permit that Auntie's saying he did everything for?
We do the permits, which he did, and then you have to go through all the inspections of Albert and everything.
But he's saying that he's, that it's already approved, that if we have a CO, we can apply, and yes, it's temporary.
Unfortunately, I'll have to defer to your real estate counsel on that one. Whether he solves it now, or whether you can solve it after you've purchased, but I certainly can't make, tell you, again, I defer to your real estate counsel on that.
And is there any way for us to just have everything inspected when we do the inspection, so as we can do work for that pre-screwing?
Right, they have a list of inspections, I have given that to him already, and all the others that need to be done.
Right.
Inspection, the third part has to be plus us.
Okay.
He's had this two or three times. He doesn't listen.
I know, he's washed his hands of it, he says it was done, we got it 34 years ago.
I can't do it for you, you're going to have to push the issue.
Yeah, but we can't just have everything inspected and final inspection for what we're doing now?
There's electrical inspections, and there are violations from a car inspector that have to be completed as well.
Right, which we did though, he just doesn't come back here.
Right, you have to call them, they haven't come back yet.
Are you asking if those inspections can be done as part of this approval?
Yes.
Again, not giving you legal advice, because I can't. The odds are, is that the current violation, if you've got any sort of financing or any other title work, will interfere with your ability to acquire the property. I can't, I'm not going to speak to that. So that will likely have to be resolved first.
It's already been flagged after the final search.
Right, so it'll probably, that'll probably have to be resolved now. The planning board doesn't care, right? And sometimes we have applicants come to us where their site plan does fix it. It doesn't sound like that's the case. So we don't care at this point, as a planning board, what the status of that violation is. So you're likely going to have to solve that from a real estate perspective, because you won't be able to finalize the deal.
So the, we did go in to ask for the, we just want to ask, I'm going to get it scheduled. I think it's just recent, so we're going to have to, if that's done, and fire stuff, it's okay. And it was, they wanted some drawings from 34 years ago, that this... have anymore. How would we get around that, or how would we solve that?
Well, I, I mean, we have drawings, you just have to come to the office and give me what you need.
Oh, yeah, and that's a, that's a distinct issue for us.
Normally, you give it to the owner, I mean, I know you're the lessee, and I know you're gonna be the one stopped doing it, so just come to the office, I'll tell you what you need.
Okay, okay.
So I think you have to solve your short-term problem of the violation, or push whoever you need to shove to solve that violation. Find it, find either the, if, if you can, try to find the existing baseline engineering work, if you can't find it, find a good engineer that can put, put together a package for you. But again, I, I do encourage you also, have, you know, have counsel as well. Lots of times, folks don't have counsel, and the project stalls and ends up costing them more money, because they don't have a good engineer or a good counsel. So, that's my-
You end up spending, you end up spending more money-
Not giving you legal advice, yeah.
Yeah, you end up spending more money trying to nickel and dime it than just getting an engineer in.
And doing it, yeah.
Yeah. So then all the other stuff, the signage and all of that will just be part of the engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks great over there, too.
We're getting there, there's only three of us, so it's, it's, we've slowed down a little, we'll, we'll speak. All right, thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, Karen.
We'll see you soon, and I'll see you soon, remember that, I know.
All right, thanks, Carol. Um, okay, so we just have to approve minutes from five thirteen. Who wasn't here? I don't think I was here.
I was nothing, you weren't here four, three, you weren't here last mon, when you ran the meeting.
Five thirteen, wasn't it five?
Yeah, you were in the Rangers game.
Yes.
Sorry.
And that was the worst game to be at, it was like, it was like horrible.
It's 'cause you were there.
I was under the bus.
Oh, gosh.
Don't know where you were.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't give it up.
No, I think I put it out there. Yeah, yeah, so, that was, that was the worst game ever, except for when they lost the gamble. So, so, yeah, so we just need to, somebody to mo, make a motion to approve the five thirteen minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Member Kelly in second. Member Allen, and I will abstain, and-
Aye.
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 And opposed?
My, my next question for you, in light of this special meeting, Terry, is there any business, do we need to have that meeting, or can we cancel our next June meeting? Because this was a special meeting, we've all, did we receive any others that we didn't discuss tonight on submission date?
Not that I'm aware of. Did anybody submit?
If I'm, if I'm missing something, let me know, but I don't-
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we need to meet in two weeks.
Really?
Well, was there any submissions that were not present here tonight?
Right, 'cause we just added every, we just talked about it, everybody was trying.
Did two oh eight submit?
Swear to anything? No, they're gonna submit, they're, I don't know.
But if they're coming up-
They've already missed the submission deadline.
Right, so they won't be till July at least.
No, they'll be July.
How about the Mexican restaurant over here, the other one that they're doing the wall and all that?
Thirty Carpenter?
Carpenter.
They would've missed, they would've been on the submission.
Right, they would've been here, they're not, I, then I don't think so.
What happened with that? I thought they did that, you approved it with conditions.
We did approve that with-
I think we approved it with conditions, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you did it with conditions, right?
Yeah, yeah, we did that last meeting, at the public, we had the big-
I'm just, I'm just saying, in light of the special meeting and the resolution, all those people we would've brought back in two weeks for those resolutions, we don't need to- What?
Should be done.
Right.
I think, I, I don't think we have business, and-
No, I agree.
I would, I love you guys, but I don't love you that much.
But we love you more for remembering.
So just, I would just put a notice that the meeting is, is canceled, because we've accomplished all the business we needed, why hold a meeting when you don't have any stuff to discuss?
I agree. I agree.
Delete.
Delete?
You, you really did two meetings in this one, so-
It was four hours long.
Three.